Goodbye, thanks, and you?
Wonderful. I assume we're still under the mask mandate.
Michael, could you make an announcement?
Two.
Could you make an announcement, not only that tomorrow's election day, but what the times are? I've had a million people ask me. First of all, we made-
What are the times?
Seven AM to eight PM.
Thank you.
It was an unforced error, too. We put a- September 21st is primary voting. How down run 37, 39.
Joe, do you want to do that on the public comment?
I was going to anyway, yep.
All right, I'm gonna- Jamie, you're good?
Yeah.
Board all set?
Yep.
Good evening. Let me call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for September 20th, 2021, to order. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I move that we go into executive session to discuss two items. First is pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel wastewater superintendent. Second is pursuant to general law, C30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirement, Purpose 7, the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22F and G, to review and approve and/or discuss the possible release of executive session minutes taking- taken dated January 4th, 2021, February 1, 2021, March 8, 2021, March 15, 2021, and March 24th, 2021. Votes may be taken.
Second.
Moved in second to go into executive session. Just a note, we will be returning to open session at no later than 6:30 PM. Roll call vote, Larry?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Just gonna let them get in inside. Oh, I will, when you get back to the air. Good evening. I'm gonna call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for September 20th, 21, back to order. We started tonight's meeting in executive session where we took up non-union personnel contract matters as well as approved executive session meeting minutes. We did not take any action on, A, the non-union personnel. We did vote to approve the meetings, uh, minutes listed in the packet. With that, we are opening up the, uh, public side of this meeting at 6:32 PM. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are under a mask mandate from the Board of Health. Um, so anyone that does not have a mask, there is masks in the back of the room at the table. Uh, this was announced in a special meeting by the Board of Health last week. And, uh, last week I announced that it wasn't a mandate. If we could social distance, we were okay. I was corrected by the Chair of the Board of Health this week. And, uh, unless there's few enough people in this room to be all of us six feet apart, it's mandatory for all. Public comment and announcement, and Joe, I'll start with you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you and the members of the board. Um, first and most importantly, tomorrow, we have our special town election. So that is Tuesday, September 21st, at, uh, Community Center. Um, in the town election, the polling hours will be open from 7:00 AM, uh, to 8:00 PM. And so, of course, we encourage everybody to participate in that. Uh, secondly, completely different mindset. Uh, the town has been made aware of a, a group, uh, calling themselves the Harwich Wastewater Committee. Uh, they've advertised that they're going to have a Zoom meeting this Thursday, September 23rd, at 6:00 PM. Uh, I want to emphasize that this is a private group. This is not the town of Harwich. We will be reaching out to them, uh, to ensure that they make it, um, certain that it's a private group. Um, and we are hopeful, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that they would reach out to have, uh, our wastewater experts available to answer questions as well. But just want to emphasize that the event, uh, on Zoom for a Harwich Wastewater Committee is not a town event.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Start with the gentleman in the back, and you're next. Yep, you're next.
Hi. Ed McManus, uh, gave the report from this weekend's festivities with the Cranberry Festival. It was luckily beautiful weather, more or less. Although Cindy may have disagreed on that for Saturday night with the fireworks, but, uh, the festival was well attended and went smoothly. Uh, I think, uh, the vendors did very well, and, uh, people seemed to enjoy themselves. Um, uh, I want to thank, uh, all the folks from the town, the police and fire department, folks at Public Works, especially the custodial staff that kept the restrooms open and clean, Carolyn Carey for, uh, making that work. And, uh, uh, also, uh, some of the kids at, uh, the high school on Friday. Don Bates' cross-country team were very helpful in setting up the event. And the members of the Key Club on Saturday, helping vendors set up. Um, so it was good. Uh, unfortunately, by the time it was all over on Sunday, and it's still 7:30 at night, and I looked around, and there were, oh, six of us volunteers left finishing clearing the tables from the field and all an average age of about 73. We'd- we've come to the conclusion that, uh, unless we get a turnout of new volunteers, this was probably the last, uh, festival as far as the committee's concerned, because we just can't continue on. I know I've been doing it for 21 years. Um, with the help of Cindy, we are going to convene a meeting at the Chamber of Commerce, uh, offices, um, October-
October 6.
October 6th, at, uh, 6:30, and ask folks, uh, who are interested in seeing it continue, or folks, uh, you know, who are involved in other committees, like the Athletic Boosters or the Children's Fund, who represent the constituency, that all of the funds that the festival raises goes to benefit if they could send representatives to see if we could come up with a cadre of people to continue it, because it's a really spectacular community event. And I'd hate to see it disappear, but quite honestly, there isn't enough energy in the remaining volunteers to keep it going. But anyway, this weekend was a great success, I think, and it was a, a good way to begin the process of coming out of pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. You can. That mic's hot, right, Jamie?
Yep.
And then I would just ask, state your names for the record, and you can pull down your mask to speak if you'd like.
Oh, thanks. Then I'm gonna pass out.
You just hand the pile to Don, and he'll pass them down.
Hi, Joe. How'd you know you shouldn't do this in the classroom?
So my name is John Selby. I live at 11 Ships Haven Road in Harwich Port.
And I'm Marina Selby. I live at the same address. Um, my dad always said, the only thing worse than a dirty fighter was someone who didn't fight at all. So on that note, to whom it may concern, as residents and taxpayers of Harwich Port and major stakeholders, we have serious concerns regarding the proposed project of our abutting neighbors at 6 Ships Haven Road to install an oversized, rotating, intrusive, and conspicuously placed solar tracker on their front lawn. The placement of this tracker will be visible from all our interior and exterior sightlines. We would have expected that we and all the abutters/residents would have been apprised of this plan with sufficient time to process and vet the situation, but only learned of it secondhand last Friday, September 17th, four days ago. There has been zero transparency and zero communication from this abutter. We are under the impression that the project will soon commence as materials were delivered in a seemingly clandestine way in the dark, late Saturday evening, September 18th. Here is a list of our complaints. Number one, health and safety concern. The glare of solar panels can have an adverse effect from those who are prone to migraines. The glare from solar trackers reflecting directly into our home is alarming. We feel threatened health-wise, especially since we are elderly and full-time residents, by the massive size, the movement of the tracker, the electricity it creates, and how it is distributed. Number two, the threat to our property value. We recently moved full-time to Harwich Port, August 2019, after spending 16 summers here, as well as a lifetime of summers on the Cape in various towns. At this stage, our home, like many retirees, is our world. We have made a huge investment, not only monetarily, but emotionally into our home. To say that this proposed project has caused us considerable angst is an understatement. I can only implore you to imagine this happening next to your home. The scale of this solar tracker is appropriate for an industrial and/or commercial site, not a charming quintessential Cape Cod neighborhood. Number three, negative impact to the town. We have yet to see a residential solar tracker in Harwich. An approval of this plan could set an unfortunate precedent to the overall character of Harwich. The fact that this can be viewed from all the traffic, including foot traffic from Lower County, as well as the boats in Allen Harbor, highlights the far-reaching visual impact of this project. Number four, detracts from the aesthetics of the streetscape. Ships Haven Road is a small dead-end cul-de-sac with beautifully maintained homes that reflect pride of ownership and respect to the Cape Cod aesthetic. A freestanding, stories-high, and wide-rotating structure does not belong in a residential neighborhood. It will be an eyesore for not only abutters, but for all that either walk or drive by. One neighbor commented incredulously that she was not allowed to extend her deck by three feet, yet a 14-by-30-foot monstrosity is okay. Number five, unneighborly approach. It is unconscionable to us that we were never solicited or consulted regarding this project, given the direct impact it will have on us on multiple levels. And the fact that the materials were delivered in the dark was disturbing. When we recently replaced a split-rail fence on our property, and although not obligated, we informed our abutting neighbor. That, from our perspective, is a good and caring neighbor. After reviewing the plan, we saw no mention of mitigation, whether it be shielding trees such as arborvitae's or cedars to block the sightlines from abutters' homes. In summary, we see no benefit for a system of this scope to be allowed in a small residential neighborhood. We strongly feel further review and analysis needs to be conducted with respect to health, safety, noise, environmental impact on natural habitats, and the aesthetic disturbance for the neighborhood and community in the vicinity. We implore, we implore you, for all of the above stated reasons, to deny the permit for the solar tracker at 6 Ships Haven Road or minimally halt it until further analysis. In closing, try to imagine how you would all feel if this was occurring in your neighborhood with no notification whatsoever. To end with a fighting metaphor, we feel we have been sucker punched. Thank you for your time and consideration, respectfully, John and Marina Selby. And I do have one footnote. We were informed that this would not be the first residential solar tracker within Harwich upon inquiry. I requested the addri- the addresses of those so we could view them firsthand and speak to the neighbors regarding the impact. I provided my email per the building department's request. It was informed those addresses would be sent to me. I am still waiting to hear back. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for taking the time to come here tonight and present that.
You're welcome.
Joe?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my understanding that, uh, the Selbys, uh, had a conversation this morning with the Assistant Town Administrator, um, about this topic. I know that, uh, Megan has reached out to the Building Department for additional information. It's our understanding, uh, that there is no permit that has been issued, but a permit is being contemplated and working through, uh, the building commission process. There is no venue yet for the Board of Selectmen or any regulatory board to be engaged in this conversation, but staff is actively reviewing it. Uh, with regard to the last comment about the addresses, I'm not aware as to when that request was made, but I'll certainly make sure that staff expedites that, that response.
And Joe, can we ask that you communicate with us as well as them-
Certainly will.
-with information, please?
Good?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment and announcement?
Thank you, Carolyn Carey, the Community Center Director. I just wanted to mention a few things that are happening at the Community Center. Um, first, we are getting ready for Halloween, and we will be doing a drive-through trick-or-treat again. Um, and that means that we are looking for donations. We have sent out that letter. In addition, we have our Guess the Candy Corn contest. We also had pumpkins donated, so you can guess the weight of the pumpkins. We are making, um, arrangements because we can't, because of COVID, have our boutique where people can come in and pick up costumes. So we're doing it by appointments. Um, and we are going to be painting pumpkins to decorate. Um, we have our October calendars ready. Uh, in addition, we have started a brand-new Community Center newsletter that will be sent out electronically. It is on our website as well. Uh, we're hoping people will sign up for that. It's a lot of information. Um, one of the things in the newsletter is that I am requesting for people to help us set the direction of the Community Center. So we're asking what they're looking for, and certainly we know people want it open more, and that's one of our top priorities, working with administration. We're doing that, but this is really about what other programs can we bring in? So you'll see that letter in there. And then lastly, I just wanted to shamelessly announce that we are trying to hire at the Community Center so that we can do some more great things. So this is posted, these are part-time positions, and those are posted on our webpage, too. Um, and I just wanted to let you know that we're up and working at the Community Center, and we're hoping more and more people will come back in. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Uh, the dates and times of the events on the website as well?
They're direct.
Thank you.
And this flyer is in the back of the room.
Thank you. Public comment and announcement, anyone else?
Just one last thing. I forgot to, uh, announce earlier. Um, this Friday, September 24th, at the, uh, Holy Trinity Church, from 10:00 to 4:00, uh, the, uh, Cape Cod Healthcare is holding a blood drive. Um, I know I've been donating here on Cape Cod the 21 years I've been here, and it's, uh, their blood supplies are low, and it's a critical that folks who can donate come out and do so.
Thank you, Ed. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Okay, moving on, status of a request for proposal for Bank Street. Joe, this one is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In a moment, we're gonna have our Conservation Agent, Amy Yousowsky, um, come forward to present, uh, an update. Um, the board may recall that, uh, with regard to 203 Bank Street, e- either folks refer to it as Zeal Fire Station. Um, the past immediate use was the Harbor Masters Repair Shed, uh, repair building, I should say. Uh, but with regard to that request for proposal, the town became aware that there may be a need for a wetland delineation on the property. So before we could proceed, I asked, uh, our task, Amy, uh, to reach out. She, um, was able to get, help us get Surveyor Paul Sweetser to review that, and I believe Amy has updates this evening on the status of that process and how it may or may not impact on our soon-to-be-released RFP.
Thank you, Joe.
Yes.
Good evening, Amy.
Good evening. Um, for the record, Amy Yousowsky, Conservation Administrator. Um, hot off the presses, I do have, um, that plan. If you would like to see it, I only got it this morning, so that's why it wasn't in your packet. Be happy to provide them.
Thanks, Amy.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
So as Joe said, I was brought in to kind of help with, with the process. It came to our attention that there was a questionable area, wet area that was on our actual property. If you look at the plan, we're on the left-hand, kind of lower side, it says 50 feet from wetland. That little depression, if you look underneath there, there's a low spot there. And just like any homeowner would have to do if I ever saw a plan where I, we questioned if there was a wet area there that we thought might be jurisdictional. It's just good practice to have what we call an existing condition site plan, so you know what you're getting, what you're selling versus what you're buying. So there was that question that came up, um, about that small area. It came back that that wetland, it is, while it is wet, is less than our jurisdictional size, which is 3,000 square feet, um, and thus is unregulatable. So what that means is that the edge of the ditch is the edge of wetland, and then the corresponding 50 and 100-foot buffer zones, um, are, um, corresponding to that were put on the plan. We also already knew about an isolated wetland that is a vernal pool to the east of the property that is on town conservation land. And I also, I asked Mr. Sweetser to put the buffer zones to that as well, just to give you kind of a real comprehensive plan of everything that's going on on the property. While they were at it, though, you know, we already had the building location, but they put the building on there. I asked him to put the existing edge of paved parking area on there as well, because that all goes into coverage on the lot. Um, I'm not gonna speak to, to know the zoning or anything like that, but, um, I essentially think with this plan right here, you, from the, at least from a conservation perspective, our concerns would be alleviated about that small little wetland and that this would be ready to go-
Great.
-out for RFP. So, and I will say Paul did a great job in getting, you know, everyone's super busy right now. So he was contacted in, I think, early August and was able to turn this around.
Great, thank you, Amy. Joe?
No, I think that, you know, is the last question that we had to, to, um, um, come to conclusion on, so now there's nothing holding back on, um, releasing a, a request for proposals for the disposition of that building, uh, in accordance with the various votes of town meeting. Uh, so now Megan and I can work on that immediately. Usually takes a few weeks for us to get everything ready, but I should be able to report to the board, middle of October, that the RFP is ready to go out in the next steps.
Thank you. Board questions, Don?
Uh, no.
Mary?
Um, what, what will the RFP ask for? Anything in particular, or is it pretty broad and spoke?
If, if I recall correctly, for this particular property, uh, the town has the authority to, uh, dispose of all of the land. Um, there, there is a consideration there for demolition. So that is, uh, I, I realize now I misspoke. That is one more thing I will have come before the board, um, next week, is whether the board intends for me to have the building demolished and the land be disposed of, or does the board want to go forward with the building as is, et cetera, et cetera. So I can give more detailed information on that part of it next week.
But the RFP itself is pretty broad in what someone could do with that land.
That's my understanding of the vote, it's correct.
It's not any specific.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mary?
Uh, nothing more. Thank you, Amy.
I have no comments. Thank you, Amy. Okay, next up, discussion and possible vote to accept the Five Bells Neck request for proposal results from Historic West Harwich Schoolhouse, LLC. Joe, I'm gonna let you open this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as the board is aware, um, we have the longstanding, uh, issue of what to do with Five Bells Neck, uh, also commonly referred to as the West Harwich Schoolhouse. Uh, as I updated the board last week, uh, there was a, uh, a request for proposals that went out. Um, the deadline to respond was September 9th at 2:00 PM. The town did receive, uh, one response for that request for proposals. The sole bidder was from Harwich, excuse me, Historic West Harwich Schoolhouse, LLC. Um, the bid proposal within their offer was for $1. So I have not done my next steps, which would be to evaluate, uh, their proposal to determine whether the six criteria that were outlined in the proposal, whether they've been highly advantageous or, or, uh, less advantageous, to make a determination to this board. Uh, given that we only had one respondent, it's my understanding that there's a discussion that can take place this evening amongst and through the board as to what the board may want to consider going forward. Throughout this process, prospective, uh, proposers were made aware that the town under 30B always retains the right, for any reason or no reason, to reject proposals and scrap it, or also for the board to reject proposals or to take any other action therein. So we do have fairly wide latitude as to what we can do next.
Thank you, Joe. Start the conversation with the board. You've all read the, uh, the bid.
Yeah.
So Larry, I'll start with you.
Uh, you all want to start with the comments from the people here first, or?
Nope.
Okay, uh, I'll start then. This has been, uh, gone through several, several iterations at, uh, town meetings. I'm wanting to, uh, maintain historical nature, keep that building because of historic property values. And, uh, we've actually, uh, gone through, uh, I think, several RFPs on this. And the last RFP, I know we tried to make it, uh, to, Mary, your point on the, uh, uh, firehouse, we tried to make this very broad for people to, uh, give a chance to respond to it. And my, I gather the $1 was in that process so that, uh, that would start the process on going forward and, uh, seeing what we could do with that building, using, uh, various funding sources, whether it be CPC, of course, is one, but they're also looking at, uh, historical committees and things like this get funding for it. I will note a couple of things reading through the information. Uh, one was, I think, uh, we always talk about affordable housing, and I think, uh, we always question whether a building, a building like that could be used for affordable housing. I think the town gave an estimate which is higher than the committee itself, but their original estimate was a million-plus dollars to bring that up to basically cold. Makes it very expensive property for affordable housing. The other issue that's been raised over the years is the, uh, as most of you know, that there's a, uh, uh, coordinated hydrocarbons from, uh, basically a dry cleaning, uh, place there some years ago that create a plume of contamination in the groundwater. And there's been a lot of, uh, discussion about that, because that would, uh, prevent it from, uh, using any type of permanent housing. I, I think we need to re, go back and relook at that. Uh, that was started in, I think, 2006. It's been monitored. Uh, I know we hired, we being the town, hired Bennett and O'Reilly, 2006, maybe, 2007, to look at it, and they still, uh, found a plume there. I did find on the, uh, DEP, Department of Environment, Environmental Protection, they, they have still been monitoring those test wells in, uh, some houses up to, uh, 2019. And the levels have dropped, uh, to the extent now that the best I can find is they don't, uh, find a concern with that anymore for using that for housing. Uh, but they have, I could not find that they've issued a finer report, which would have to be done before we could actually go forward with it, even though they've, they've suggested in reports that's true. So that's, uh, one thing we have to consider. Uh, I think the, uh, in my mind, uh, with the wishes of town meeting, we do want to, uh, keep the historical nature of that, but that means we could do anything. We could put affordable housing in there, but it was financially feasible. That's the part I would question at this point, because so much work has to be done. I would like to, my personal opinion, I know Michael will have more discussion, uh, I would like not to do anything, uh, take a vote on this night, but ask for Joe and people to give us some more evaluation before we proceed. Think this is a first, first look at this. Uh, and- And all this committee, as the town has, by the town votes, have given us a lot of thought, and we need to be careful going forward. Certainly the wish is to maintain that. Once we lose it, we know from other, once we lose historical property, as they say, it's gone, right? There's not much you can say about that. So, that's, that'd be my hope, is that we continue the discussion, this evaluation to go forward.
Thank you, Larry. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was inclined to actually accept the offer and move, and move into the next stage, but I could agree with Larry that at least we should evaluate it more. I was on the West Harwich School Building Committee in the late 90s. We evaluated moving it. The Board of Selectmen put out bids in the early 2000s on a, on a board that I was on, and that was for affordable housing. HESH wound up with the bid, and HAC was also involved, but it became apparent that it was unbelievably expensive to actually do it, and that was 20 years ago. So, we bailed on that with HESH. Having said that, I will caution everybody, be careful what you wish for, because this is not part of the DCPC protection area. This is a one-off building that is not contained in the lines that were delineated. So unlike other things that we do in life, when this is gone, it's gone. So I mean, I would hate to see that happen. There are people that are still alive here that have relatives that went through that building. To have that as a cultural center, as an educational center, any, any one of a myriad of things. There's hardly any parking, so I mean, ultimately it would have to be a boutiquey thing like that, but it would certainly benefit the town's economy to have something like that at a time when we're trying to vie for cultural money.
Mary?
For starters, I commend the group, the West Harwich Historical Group, that put the proposal together. I thought it was well, well-written and, and a good presentation. However, there's two things that really interested me about getting involved here as a selectman. One is bringing money in. I, I will never forget the 2019 town meeting where the town budget passed by some 20 votes. A clear message from the residents, we have got to get our taxes in line. So, in selling property, to me, that's a great thing, because we'll get some money for the property, and then it's on the tax rolls. This does none of that. We're selling it for a dollar, and it's going to a nonprofit, so it's not getting on the tax rolls. We've already done Alborough House, the library, and the Chatham Street School. And Brooks Academy, we approved at the most recent town meeting, I think it was 1.2, 1.3. And you know that's not the end of the story. That's 1.3 to shore up the foundation. We're going to be spending a lot more money on that. So, again, this doesn't really excite me. So I believe somebody on the board mentioned something last week about housing. So I asked a friend of mine who's a realtor, and he brought along a developer, and we got the key from the chief, and went and looked at the property Saturday. And their analysis is we could get four apartments in there, two on each floor, about 650 to 700 square feet, which I'm told is a reasonably sized apartment. And the, the guesstimate, and granted, it's only a guesstimate, is for the developer, it would be about 800 to a million to develop it. I'm interested in pursuing that. I, I love history. I think that's great, but our, our crisis is not over history. Our crisis is over housing. So that's where I'd like to go.
Thank you, Mary. My comments I made last week, and it was also related to housing, but that wasn't the be-all, end-all. The building's unique, and I appreciate what the, what the working group has done and the proposal that they made, but $1. I find that, that we have been, had a very vocal group email us and call us, spoke to one of the proponents of the project today, and agreed to keep an open mind if we can move forward. If the proposal stays at a dollar, I'll say it again, I can't support it. I could certainly support it for the purchase of the building if they moved it someplace else. The land value there is 140,000. And I believe our responsibility extends way beyond one group that wishes to purchase this property. And the hundred, the $1 purchase doesn't include years to come, and it's open, years to come of CPC requests that would then be competing with some of our own projects, historic projects. So as it sits, I have an open mind. I'll open this up to the, to the public that came to speak on it. And then Joe, I would ask that you do a analysis for us, the pros and cons, advantageous versus not advantageous, and we'll, and we'll bring this back for further comment and vote. But for now, I will open it up to anyone in the public that wishes to speak. And I would just ask that if the person that speaks before you says it, you can say, "I agree," and then add points. This is a lengthy agenda. And state your name and, name for the record, please.
Name for the record is Sally Urbano. I'm from West Harwich, and I'm part of the group that submitted the proposal. I'm glad you're keeping an open mind. I appreciate that, because the way the RFP was structured, it was not like a particularly friendly RFP to our group. So we would very much like a chance, and I know that according to the RFP structure, you can call us in, and we could have a conversation with you, or we could do a presentation, because we did a lot of work and research in that. And, you know, it's not just the dollar. We have pledges already for 20,000 to stabilize the building initially. I know from the past, if you set up a 501(c)(3), if you collect money for it before you own the thing, then you have to disband it. Ask Jack Brown what it was like to disband that 501(c)(3). So I didn't want to do that. We create that problem again. I think we have a, a pretty good proposal here, and I think we could validate why we did what we did, if we get a chance to share with you.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you.
I guess it's me. Duncan Berry, Route 28 in West Harwich. And believe it or not, I was not part of the group that put together. I was a kind of a consultant to what. And one of the conversations that we had was about the price, the submitting price. And, you know, it, the standard operating procedure, starting in like 1965 with the Rouse Corporation developing the Baltimore waterfront with old houses, old town buildings and the like, was to auction them off at $1 apiece. And that's been SOP for, you know, 60 years, I think. I don't think it was intended by the group. I think the last conversation we had was going to, there was going to be an offer for $1,694 from the year that the, of incorporation. This is a symbolic number. And the reason, I think, from the point of view of the residents, number one, is that if you read the town report, annual report for 1872, the combined total of all the investment in the land, the carpentry, the harbor, the, the labor, the hardware, everything, for the East Harwich, the South Harwich, and the West Harwich School, came to the grand total of $10,077. The town has gotten its money's worth for that piece of property. It has been supported since my great-great-grandfather was paying taxes, and all of our ancestors paid taxes on it. That's, the idea was, I think, from the point of view of the, the people that submitted the bid, was that this is kind of a symbolic transfer to take over a civic building and have it function in a civic manner. So, that was number one, just to discuss the, the pricing. I think that I would like to be at the table, if it's legal or ethical or germane, if there is a future conversation about that, because that can be discussed and massaged, you know? We can work around that. And I say that because, item number two, an art, an item that could not be included in the proposal because of the, simply the timeframe that was required for the RFP, was that during August, of course, all the academic institutions are on vacation, and we could not get letters of intent from two entities that are dying to occupy it and use it as a satellite's campus for a combined program that exists with the Department of Architecture, the Carl, College of Charleston, and the American Academy of Building Arts. They want to use it as a site to develop preservation carpentry skills among students, and then have it become a, a location for future classes, because their competitor, Yale University, is doing it on Nantucket. And they want to have something in a colonial-era village where they can have working sites. And, and if you look, you know, just within a quarter-mile radius, there are two 18th-century dwellings that are screaming out for attention. So, we would love to try and secure a letter of intent from those two people, and they, I've been back and forth with them, and I think that might go a long way in allaying your fears about the viability and possible economic utility and revenue capacity for that property for the town. I think that's worth talking about. And third, just to make a general pitch too, I think the lady, Selectman Lady, Mrs. Anderson, just said the crisis is with housing, not with history. I would say that with, the historical fabric of this part of town offers a great opportunity. It's kind of this peculiar gem. It's the only stretch on 28 between Chatham and Falmouth, where we have this history of this kind of accidental combination of every major residential style of American architecture between 1740 and 1940. It's like, it's a miracle that it survived. If you go down anywhere west, you see the 1970s planning ethos was bulldoze everything so you can have parking lots in front and get rid of, and all you have is buildings from the 60s and 70s all the way down. You know, we have this. If you go to, you know, Exeter, New Hampshire, Manchester, Vermont, up into Maine, you know, along the, the North Shore, these are attractive economic engines for, for tourism and for growth in, that convey from one part of town and spread to the other parts of town. I think the idea here is that this civic element in this part of our little town, our little village, has a value, an economic value, that we can really leverage. And, you know, I think that there's plenty more here that can go on in this conversation. I would encourage you to have that. I would very much like to be part of it, and if I can do anything, just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Duncan. Anyone else? Joe, I think we'll wait for your report, but do you want to set up a meeting prior to that, to discuss with the?
Well, I, I think a meeting prior may be premature. The next step would be for me to assemble staff. We can start that tomorrow and go through the evaluation criteria, the six criteria that are in the proposal. But I, I do need to respond to just make sure that everyone's on the same page as far as information, because I heard references to other commonwealths, other states. This process is dictated by, once this board or predecessor board declared this to be surplus property, we then become bound by Mass General Law's Chapter 30B, because that's the disposition of surplus property. And Chapter 30B has guided this process every step of the way. And it's important to note that the reason why I had to issue a request for proposals is because the town had to determine the value of the property. And it states very clearly under 30B that the town may rely upon its assessor's property card. And so we did that. And as was stated earlier, and if you looked at it a year ago, it was $1,000 more in value than it is today. But if you look at the property card, the property card identifies that the land is valued at $140,600. The building is valued at $3,400 for a total valuation of 144,000. The point I'm making on that is, once we saw that the value was over 35,000, we were bound by state law to do this request for proposal. Now, within that, there, under the section that talks about the evaluation process, in the second paragraph, the last sentence, we, we, the town, did write that the town reserves the explicit right to select a proposal which does not necessarily contain the highest price and/or economic benefit to the town. So that is something that, after we do our evaluation, to see how many of the criteria were highly advantageous, how many were less advantageous, and do a score, it still is a conversation that the board can have a determination, because it would have to be the board to determine if there's a greater factor other than simply the criteria, such as accepting a price that's not the highest, or if you feel that the benefit outweighs the price. The second part of that, under notification, says that the Board of Selectmen reserves the right to reject any and all proposals or to cancel the RFP. And so I think the prudent and appropriate step is for me to now assemble staff members to help me do that evaluation of the proposal, report back to the board first, and then if the board deems it appropriate, then reach out to any of the advocates who were the proposers or any other action that the board takes. There was a comment earlier that the, the RFP was not friendly to a group. I, I did my job then, and staff did our job. We, we can't be friendly. We have to adhere to Chapter 30B. And that's the cold, hard reality of what a Chief Procurement Officer Labor's under.
Thank you, Joe. So I would just leave this as, we'll bring it back, and Sally, I'll notify you as to when we bring it back.
I appreciate it.
And the, if, unless the board disagrees, I see no reason to talk about the next agenda item related to this until after that conversation.
Motion on the next one?
Nope. We don't need one. Motion on D.
Yeah.
I, I move that we vote to hold a public hearing for an alleged noise violation, Whichmere Harbor Functions LP, DBA, Whichmere Harbor Beach and Tennis Club.
Second.
Moved and seconded, to hold a hearing for an alleged violation. Any discussion?
Only I hope it's, Joe, as we've talked very timely, do it as quickly as you can.
Yep. Council's already aware that we have this queued up.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead, Mary.
I move that we vote to authorize the town administrator to be the hearing officer for the public hearing for alleged notice, noise violations, Whichmere Harbor Functions LP, doing business as Whichmere Harbor Beach and Tennis Club.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
None.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I move that we vote to approve a hawkers and peddlers license for Pilgrim Lodge AF and AM for the sale of Christmas trees at 9 Sisson Road, pending building department approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
How long have they been holding this? Does anyone remember? It's been forever, it seems.
It's at least a decade and a half, to my knowledge.
Yeah.
I'm just perplexed that we're already talking about Christmas trees, but that is what it is.
No other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we vote to waive the license fee of $60 for a hawkers and peddlers license for Pilgrim Lodge AF and AM.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Don? Any discussion?
No.
Mary?
No. They're on 501(c)(3), right?
None.
I don't believe, I don't believe.
No. No discussion.
No discussion, yeah. I just, in keeping concert with my normal, when people ask to waive fees, I'm against it. There's a certain staff time involved in this, so I am against waiving fees. No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Three, one, Joe?
I move that we vote to approve a 2021 weekday entertainment license for 554 Street Bar, doing business as Three Monkeys, 554 Route 28, weekdays 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM inside, recorded and/or live music with amplification, pending building department approval.
In second?
I'll second that for discussion. I wanted more clarification of that.
Okay.
Me too.
Moved and seconded. Larry, I'll start with you.
Well, I was just trying to understand it, because I got a little confused whether it was inside or outside, because it seemed to state it both ways.
Inside only.
And it's, okay, that helps me out. It was inside only. And I also just wanted, because I get, I lose track of this, I wanted to double-check the time, if this is consistent with our other licensing in the area.
It's, it's, I'll answer that. It's inconsistent, because it's earlier than most of the other ones close.
But it's the same dead, same close time.
It's in between that 8 and 11 slot. Most of our licenses are 12, 12 o'clock.
Okay.
Questions? Mary?
My, my only concern is they have a beautiful, big window, and I just want it to be clear, if we grant this, that they can't have that whole big front window open, or it'll be outside entertainment after 10, is it 10 or 10:30, that it's our deadline for outside. So I would just want that made clear if we grant it.
Joe?
I believe a representative from I believe a representative from the applicant was going to be present this evening. Staff did have a conversation with them, and it's my understanding they insisted that they wanted to proceed as applied for, and we did raise those concerns.
Okay. Anyone here from the establishment?
Tony Gallardi from Three Monkeys. I'm sorry, what was the question? The request would be that for us to shut the windows at 10 o'clock even though the musicians are inside?
Right, that was my question, that was my question, because I can't believe you can have those windows open and not violate the 150 feet. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I see you setting yourself up for trouble there.
Well, during normal times, we have our windows open when we use our regular music system. And I don't think this would be any louder than when we do have our music on inside. We're not looking to have, you know, a four or five-piece band. We're just looking to have someone play guitar, maybe two people, more of a background music than anything like a concert. And it's during, it would start towards the end of our dinner hours and go till 11 o'clock. But again, the musicians would be inside. If it was an issue, then we could certainly look at shutting the windows and the doors, but it's kind of the beauty of that place, that the doors can be open. And we would, we would control the noise level. So, we'd certainly be open to, if there was an issue, to looking at it. We're not, again, we're not looking to blow people away. It's just more of a, you know, some folk music, or maybe a little jazz, that type of stuff.
My only take on it is, you said, you said it best, they'd be subjecting themselves to the violation of the 150-foot rule, which if they do, they're going to have an alleged violation, and we're going to take that up. So, it's getting to the point in the year where windows are probably going to be shut anyway, but we do not require any of our other licenses to shut their windows. We can suggest it based on noise, alleged noise violations, noise violations, complaints. But to date, I think that this business has demonstrated being extremely responsible, and if they leave the music loud and they get complaints, they're going to be before us. Don, any comments?
Yeah, a little bit further than Mary's, but along the same lines. I'd be willing to go for that as, at least for the time being, if the motion included the stipulation that it was indoor only and it was subject to the noise bylaw of the town, so that you know going in that that's the risk you take. I mean, you may wind up having the same hearing that happened earlier in this agenda.
Thank you, Don.
Yeah, again, we, the music will be no louder than we've had it all summer, and I don't think we've had a noise violation this summer, so.
Thank you, Tony.
I'm curious, where's the band? Where's the musicians located?
Well, if you've been in our restaurant, if you walk in the main doors, there's a main dining room to the left, and they'll be in the back corner.
So, they're away from the windows, anyway?
Yes, they'll be against the back wall.
Thank you, Tony. I'm going to recognize the police chief.
Hi, Chief T. Gilmet, Chief of Police. Just for point of clarification, the indoor entertainment, unless I am completely mistaken, is listed right on the license, noise not to exceed the premises. The 150-foot rule is for outside entertainment. So, if it's heard on the sidewalk outside of the premises during the hours of the inside entertainment, that's a violation, or an alleged violation.
Thank you for the clarification, chief.
Okay.
Is that what it says, Joe? Is that what's on the licenses?
I, I'm really in the doubt what the chief has said.
Having been involved in some of the licensing over the past years, I believe both the Cape Cod, the cladda, is required to have their doors and windows closed as part of their indoor license, as is, as was what used to be the Irish pub. So, that was, for those locations, those were the standard requirements.
Thank you. Don, the chief is correct, that is what's on the license. And my comments would be the same. If he gets a noise violation, or if they get a noise violation, they'll be before us. So, I personally don't have a problem with this. Any more questions from the board?
None.
Can I get a motion?
I think I did.
You have a motion and a second.
Oh, there's a motion and a second.
And I second it, so.
And let's just add to the motion, subject to the noise violation bylaw.
The noise bylaw.
Noise bylaw.
And...
I'll second that.
Okay, that's part of your second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, as we get into discussion on the next two items, I just want to remind everybody that these discussion points are relative to the town meeting that is going to occur in 221 days, not the town meeting that's going to occur in 28 days. That is to say, these next two items are, we're talking about prospective articles at the annual next MAC.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joe. So, I think I will invite up Amy, or is a board member going to give the presentation?
Two board members.
Two board members, great. Welcome at their table. And potential 2022 annual town meeting conservation warrant article, so I will open the floor. We'll do one at a time and take questions from the board and the public.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Ernie Craftrey, Chair of the Conservation Commission, and with me is Brad Chase, who's the past Chair of the Commission. There are two separate articles that we'll be presenting at the 224th day or so town meeting from now. One is to amend the wetland protection bylaw, and the second is to amend the water dependent structures bylaw. The changes to both of these were included in the material for the board, and so tonight we do have a presentation that we can go through if you like, or if you prefer to just ask any questions of us that you have, then I will leave it up to you.
It's a pleasure, the board. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, Ernie and I had a conversation, and the biggest thing, Brandon and I did, too. The biggest thing that concerns me is making sure you have an educated electorate, and democracy works, and it goes out with plenty of time for everybody to know. That having been said, I'd love to see the presentation, because this is a bully pulpit, and their own meetings aren't really attended like this or televised like this.
I agree. Mary, you okay with the presentation?
I am, yeah, please.
Good.
All right. So, I'll start off with the wetland protection changes that we've proposed. The majority of these are definitional, but there are some additional changes that are more applicable, I think, to the, to how we apply our oversight. The first one is a change to the size of a regulated wetland. Presently, it's 3,000 square feet, and we're proposing that that be reduced to 1,000 square feet. It's consistent with the, with the regulated wetlands in other areas and other towns in the Cape. And from, from my perspective, with the development that's going on in our town presently, there's a, there's a stress being put on, on the wetlands that we have, on our wetland resources. And I think the reduction in size of this is, is appropriate to address some of that, but at the same time, it just makes it easier from our perspective to protect a lot of the small wetland areas like vernal pools that are just so, so important to our, to our environment and to the, to the work of our commission. So, if you like, I'll just keep going through the rest of the...
Can I just ask one question on that?
Sure, yep.
And maybe Amy could answer this if you can't. Tonight, we were given a map related to the Bag Street Firehouse.
I know that. I was figuring you would come up with that, yeah.
And the first comment that was made by Amy was, it's not 3,000 squi, it's not 3,000 square feet, so it doesn't change anything. How does the town property change in this scenario if we drop this to 1,000? The town drops it to 1,000.
Yeah, I'd let Amy address that.
She's on the mic behind you.
Ready to go. It's a good question. I always had a feeling that that would come up after I handed you that map. So, currently, our regulation is 3,000 square feet. If a proposal comes in, you know, after town meeting, so July 1, and this does go through a town meeting, then the other wetland, we believe, is about 2,000 square feet, it would make that wetland jurisdictional, which would mean it would have the corresponding buffer zones. Doesn't mean that nothing can happen within those buffer zones, it just makes it jurisdictional. And what that would do, it would be push those buffer zones to the north. So, I mean, it really does come down to timing for that, for that one particular property. That being said, it just happens to be a night where we're talking about that property and these regulations, because on the whole, I don't, I see a handful of wetlands that this would, that would be kicked to that jurisdictional area. We're not talking very large numbers of wetlands that are now going to become jurisdictional.
Thank you, Amy. I guess my concern, and I'm just going to say, it's a comment from me, my property, Amy, you've been there. My neighbors wanted to put in a fence, the corner of their fence in my property line, there is now a wetland. I think this probably worked out in my advantage. But in general, I find it burdensome, continuously more burdensome on homeowners. My wetland was created by my gutters. So, approved by the town of Harwich was a drainage system where my gutters go down into the ground and then shoot out into a ditch that was created by cranberry bog farmers and all hand dug out. And it was never an issue until the water started to stand there. And now, because some wetland species have grown in there, my property, my neighbor's property, now have these stringent regulations. And my definition of wetland may be very different than your definition of a wetland, but my concern is the continued burden on homeowners like myself that are ending up with wetlands in their yard, because water stands in a certain place for a while. So, that's my concern. We'll move on from that.
I have a question, Mary. Are vernal pools protected no matter what their size, or do they fall into the size category?
They are protected if they're certified. If they are not certified and they come before us...
So, if they were smaller size and they're certified, they'd still be protected?
Correct, correct. But not all ones that meet the definition for a vernal pool are certified here. And that's kind of what is, this is looking to protect.
Mary?
Amy, if there, if there aren't many of them, why are we looking to do this?
Because the, the vernal, or these types of small, isolated wetlands, and that's what these are, they're not bordering wetlands, because if they're bordering, we'd already be protecting them. So, these are those small, isolated wetlands, which may or may not be vernal. Not all small, isolated wetlands have vernal pool characteristics. I'm happy to go into that more if you want me to. They are, they probably have the most critical need of protection. They're valuable for the, if you look at the Wilderness Protection Act, for the most reasons, I guess you could say, they're considered valuable, because they're valuable for groundwater protection, public water protection, wildlife habitat, storm damage prevention, flood control, prevention of pollution. They, all the interests of the Wetlands Protection Act, about why wetlands are important, these isolated wetlands capture them all, essentially all, except for protection of fisheries, because you can't have fish in a vernal pool. But, so, a lot of times, and I hate to, like, weigh one wetland type over another, but say a coastal bank, for instance, the interests of a coastal bank are storm damage prevention and flood control, sometimes wildlife. When you look at these small, isolated wetlands, they may be small, but they're important for a whole, much bigger host of reasons.
Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mine isn't about the merits of this, because you mentioned a date. The way this thing works, since it's a bylaw change, it has to, even if it passes town meeting, it has to go to the Attorney General's office to get approved, so you're not looking at July 1st.
Correct. I realized after I said it, it's usually if the AG approves it, end of August, September-ish. That's if it gets approved.
Thank you, Amy.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
The additional changes that we're making here, a lot of them are, I'll call them clarification changes, that the impact of these is relatively benign, because they're already covered under the regulations that we have. So, buffer zone, for example, we don't have a definition for buffer zone in the current bylaws. But yet, our jurisdictional breadth is the 100 feet from a, from a wetland. Cumulative impact, this is a, this is a change, or an addition, rather, that we oftentimes have presentations, people come to the commission, we raise issues with them, and they're somewhat focused on what they see as the impact, and they don't look at the broader impacts that some of the projects that we're seeing, water dependent structures, or new houses and that sort of a thing would have on the resource areas. So, this just helps us define more than just isolated impacts to these things, that there is a cumulative impact on a lot of them. Mitigation, the principal change to this is the fact that we've now added in-lu fees on mitigation. And this also ties in with the next definition on mitigation constrained sites. We're seeing a lot of requests now for development of parcels of land properties that are what I would call virgin. Essentially, they're pristine properties. There's, there's no disturbance on them presently or anything. People want to take down the trees and put up a house. So, what this allows us to do is, in many cases, if the person, if the applicant doesn't have another resource area that they can provide mitigation on, then this will allow us to have those, the applicant provide an in-lu fee based on the calculation that we have. And that money would go into revolving fund, which I think you're all aware of, the change that was approved on that. And then we can use those funds to provide mitigation on other resource areas that aren't associated with the project at hand. So, mitigation constrained sites, I think I've covered that, it's those pristine acres that we've talked about. The 60-foot no, no new structure zone, this is a change that we made because of the concern that we have that the 50-foot buffer from a resource area is considered a no disturb zone. And historically, what, by just having the 50 and the 100-foot buffer zones under our current regulations, builders have come to us and they want to put a house right up on the, on the edge of the 50. What that does is it forces all the activity that's around that house to go into the no disturb zone. So, you have foot traffic, you have, you know, kids playing and all that sort of thing, and it disturbs it. By moving it back another 10 feet, this gives the property an opportunity for that, all that activity to take, put, place outside of the 50-foot buffer. So, and we've, we feel this is, this is very advantageous for the no disturb zone, and we've not really had too much in the way of any pushback from people or concerns. Generally, it's been easily adapted for most of the projects we've seen. The additional definitions, shellfish, we've not had a definition of shellfish in the, in the bylaws, so we've added that. I think this one contains oysters, and the prior definition that we had didn't, that's, that we have in the regulations. Variance, a lot of the, a lot of the requests that we have, especially with water dependent structures, have been granted with variances. So, the purpose here is to provide a definition of what a variance is and, you know, the terms under which it might be granted. The last two, the last few changes that we have here pertain to additional expenses that we often have. If we have a, an applicant come to us and they want to do a, make a particular disturbance on a piece of property, we may have to draw in consultants to assess what the impact will be. And this allows us to charge consultant fees that will be borne by the applicant, and the terms under which those fees would be assessed, and also that if there is an excess of fees collected, then they would be returned back to the applicant. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Don? Mary?
Nope, I think I'm good.
Larry?
No.
Anyone, anyone in the public? What's the pleasure of the board? It's never too early to start building the next warrant.
Well...
Don?
I think we should throw it in the hopper. I mean, thank you for doing exactly what I asked you to do. This should be the beginning of a discussion that'll last until May, and the sooner we decide that that's going to be on the warrant, the better, because then we can have that discussion. Not just us, the whole town.
Mary?
What's the question?
I guess my question is, do we want... I guess my question is, do we want to vote to put this on the annual town meeting warrant now, or do you want to wait some more time?
I'm okay with doing it now.
Larry?
I want to move ahead.
Like I said, never too early to start building a warrant. Can I get a motion?
Yep. I move that we put the proposed changes to the Harwich Wetlands Protection Bylaw on the 2022 warrant.
Annual Town Meeting?
Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, Joe?
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Brad Chase again. I'm going to present the proposed bylaw changes for chapter 304, Water-Dependent Structures. And this presentation is, it has about 20-plus slides, so I don't think you want a 30-minute presentation right now.
You are correct.
I'm gonna move things along a little bit. I'll follow the general content, but by way of background, the Conservation Commission updated these bylaw changes in 2003, and their intent at the time was try to find additional protections for Pleasant Bay, Salt Marsh, and protections for shellfish habitat. And those rules came in, I think they did a fairly good job for protecting Pleasant Bay, but what we found sense is that we haven't done quite the same job, I think, for protecting Salt Marsh and shellfish habitat. So, the commission has been discussing these issues really since I've been on four terms ago, and we started having hearings in 2019. We've had six hearings since then. Two were specific, single-item hearings on this topic. The other ones were posted as discussion items. And so, we came up with regulation changes, bylaw changes, in February of 2021, and we voted to move these forward. So, let me go ahead and discuss some of the particulars. First of all, in terms of dock and pier impacts, I think what we've learned, and what I feel pretty strongly, is all these structures have some level of impacts. And the major types of impacts fall into a couple categories. One is shading of, of the structures on Salt Marsh. The next is scouring impacts from pilings, structures, boats on Salt Marsh and shellfish habitat. The third is coastal bank alterations. When you put a structure in a fairly pristine coastal bank, you have more activity. You have, I think, a real inclination by the property owners to clear things out a little bit, to make more space. And so, you see impacts to coastal bank. The fourth area of impacts that I feel is pretty significant but hard to define is cumulative impacts. You have more boats, more activity, more structures, and you see more impacts in waterways.
Brad, can I stop you for a second?
Sure.
Cumulative, cumulative impacts. I'm assuming this large document we got tonight is what the key, the definition of those is and where you think they are. Because in the, in the, in the packet tonight, I'm just looking for it, in the packet tonight, you mention about seven cumulative impacts. Where did you come up with those?
Okay, so that would be this slide right here. And I just paraphrased on what I think of the four major impacts.
And where did you get the information for what you think? That's, I guess, my question.
That's a good question. I would say that I developed this presentation, it's based on my observations of somebody who has, you know, fished and shellfished in this town for a very long time. I've been a career fisheries biologist for over 35 years, and so it's really a combination of professional observations, personal observations in the town of Harwich.
Okay. I, I think that's important.
Yeah, very discreet observations, particularly in Herring River, where I've been very active for a long time, and I've just seen these structures over time. So, I think the scouring impacts is probably the most significant, and I think you can dig into the scientific literature and find, find some references on this, but it's not that well described.
Mary?
Can you just define that scouring for me?
Sure. So, picture in a flowing river where you have tides coming in and out, and you, you put, often you put in a piling or a series of piles. And so, with every tide, you have increased velocity on either side of that structure. And so, you find scouring or erosion of the sediments, which might be shellfish habitat, or Salt Marsh, or coastal bank. And it also happens in quiet areas like Whichmer Harbor and Allen's Harbor when you have floats and boats. And so, the impact of those boats moving around can scour out the substrate below. And you often have scour holes below the floats and boats in these quiet invadments. So, it's really two different types of scouring. I, I would say it's most significant in a flowing tidal river like Herring River.
Thank you.
Photographs of some of the scouring impacts. Yeah, if you want to jump ahead, there's a couple photographs we have. Okay, so here's a couple photographs of Allen Harbor, as well as the west side of Herring River. And you can see pretty clearly on the west side of Herring River, that middle piling has a large area where there's no longer any Salt Marsh. And that's real common between the bridges at Route 28 and Lower County Road and Herring River. And you see you've got fast tidal currents, and you'll see that scouring. Isn't significant, in some cases not very large, but our, our present bylaws really instruct us to avoid any such impact of Salt Marsh. There's more photos here. So, here's a couple on the east side of Herring River, and again, you can see around those pilings, you can see this loss of Salt Marsh, there's movement of sediments. And in some places, you can see a very large chunk of Salt Marsh that won't grow back. And so, I, I feel this is a particular concern for the Herring River, and especially between the two bridges, Route 28 and Lower County Road. You won't see these impacts as much in the small invadments because you don't have that tidal current. You see more scouring below the float and next to where the boat sits. I might be in a photograph. Okay, this is another type of impact, off-season storage. Our regulations are very clear that you can't do this, but we've had some real difficulty with compliance. It's so much easier to leave your float in Salt Marsh, and you can see the impacts and kills the Salt Marsh around it. Often, if it moves around with high tides, it kills a larger footprint than just the float itself. So, this is something that's presently not allowed. We're hoping to change our regulations to make it clear that it's not grandfathered, and there'll be a fine schedule, information schedule to inform people that can't do this, and follow up by fines. So, a little more definition to our language on how to deal with off-season storage.
And Brad, how long has it been a regulation that's been ignored?
I, I think this might have come in with the Pleasant Bay changes, the off-season storage.
The regulation's been there quite a while. I can't say the actual year. I can say over the past couple of years, we've been able, with the help largely of the commissioners, policing this all, and, and getting a few more people into compliance. So, we're having some success with that, but if we could make it, I mean, this is just an example, you know, of why we're proposing changes to the bylaws. But, we're seeing some success. We'd like to see more. But it's been in place for a number of years.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so this one shows scouring, excuse me, construction impact of a new dock in here. And it's obvious, you know, they have to get the chief in there to install the structure, so it's, you know, it can be considered acceptable temporary impact, but it does impact the footprint of where the pier is. Now, on the right, coastal bank erosion, when you have multiple structures, you often have the acceleration of flows that cascade the next property over, and you can see some significant bank scouring. And that's not caused specifically by a dock in here, but more by that boat there right next to it. So, again, multiple structures can cause issues. Here's a site from Google Earth looking down, a dock that went in quite a while ago, 2010. The next photo shows us 2016. In 2018, you can see there's a scour path around the, probably second or third number of pilings in from the water. And that's that force of water coming in, moving around the pilings, causing scouring of Salt Marsh. So, it, again, it's, you know, for one dock, it may not be a big deal, but it's happening in many locations. And our present bylaws do state we should try to avoid these impacts. Okay, so this slide here shows the topics that we discussed, possible changes in the bylaws. And instead of going through them all, I think I'll advance to the next slide, which shows the ones we actually moved on. So, the ones in red are the ones who made changes. And the ones in black, there were no changes made. So, the Herring River, we had a lot of discussion, and we talked about setbacks, and having the same setback we have in Pleasant Bay where docks can't be within 250 feet of each other. And the commissioners felt that Herring River had, is quite vulnerable, is a specific location, had specific problems. And the decision we made was to not change the setbacks, but to have, for that location, a moratorium on new structures, and keep the setbacks the same, which is 65 feet throughout the town. So, no change of setbacks, that was one that I actually, I wanted to see a larger setback change. I felt 65 was a very old number that goes back a long ways, but we actually voted not to change the 65-foot setback, in lieu of having great protection for Herring River. Let's go back to that one for a second. I think I'm gonna rely on this slide here because it shows the different things. Water depth at mean-low water, presently allowed 2.5 feet at mean-low water for floats. We voted to change to 3.0 feet, which is the same as Dennis and Yarmouth. That reduces that scouring impact under the float. Lockway dimensions, we voted to change those to reduce the shading impacts from the structures. There's been some good science lately that shows that if you raise up these structures, you can reduce the shading impacts. This is one, I feel like we had, you know, almost unanimous support among all the different folks that gave comment on it in other departments in town. So, this is one we'd love to see go forward, raise these things up a little bit, you'll reduce the shading impacts on Salt Marsh.
Brad, if I may...
Go ahead, Larry.
Can you expand that a bit? Because I think there are new dock structures that are available to us now to help with some of the shading and some of these things you're talking about.
Yes. So, a ratio of one to one was, was used for many years in terms of width and height of the dock. And what these recent studies found, in one-to-one ratio, you would lose about 50% of the biomass of the Salt Marsh below it, which has to be considered unacceptable. And the studies found ratios of, of one to five, that by raising them up higher, you reduce those, those shading impacts almost 100%. Some species is still 25% reduction. So, that's what we're trying to do, is to have individual pilings, monopiles it's called, that raise these structures up higher. And so, this, this change here gives that guidance to raise them higher, and also has more spacing between planks.
And I think to Larry's point, there is some new decking that they make now. It's like a grid almost.
New decking, new structure that you can use as well.
Right, yeah. It's manufactured of boatwood, the type of the thing, and those also help reduce the shading significantly.
So, number four, number five, off-season storage, I think we had good consensus, not a whole lot of concern about those two. Dredging, the Waterways Committee was interested in the possibility of, of doing more dredging in town, and we had discussions with them early on. And so, we talked about that, trying to find ways to make our bylaws a little more allowable for dredging, but we didn't vote to advance any changes. Right now, it's fairly common to have maintenance dredging. It's difficult to have improvement dredging, which means you're dredging in new areas. And so, we, we had a lot of good discussion. We didn't advance any changes to our regulations in terms of dredging. Salt Marsh, we had no changes. The language is very specific right now, that you cannot impact any aspect of the Salt Marsh from these structures. So, we kept those the same. We kept protections for coastal bank the same. Shellfish surveys, we've had a lot of difficulty. Our bylaws basically say we can't put new structures in areas that are shellfish, designated shellfish areas. And we do surveys from there. And if the surveys find shellfish, we have to give a variance to those provisions. So, what we're trying to do here is to improve the language on how we conduct surveys, and how we apply the survey results. So, we have updated the language on that, and then we just simply updated our definition of cumulative impacts. So, those are the ones that are proposed, and I think everyone can agree, though, probably the largest and most draconian change would be the moratorium on new structures in Herring River. So, I, I think the next slide's really bullets on individual items, and I, I think we probably should go through this very quickly because I don't want to take too much of your time. So, we can always put them up, and you can ask questions on the individual pieces. Again, this moratorium here came out of the discussion to have larger setbacks to match the setback of the Herring River to Pleasant Bay, and the commission voted to not go that way, instead have a moratorium on new structures in what was considered probably the most sensitive area for these type of structures in the town of Harwich. Next slide, if there are no questions. Here's a setback. We, we discussed changing the 65-foot setback to these different dimensions, and again, we did not agree on how to change that. And so, we're still set right now with a 65-foot setback, which I personally think is, is quite close, both in terms of navigation and impacts. But that's where we are for setbacks.
Brad, that's across the board, 65 feet?
Except for Pleasant Bay, where it's 250 feet.
Okay.
And those same regulations voted to have a moratorium on new docks and piers in Round Cove. So, there's a lot of concern going back almost 20 years on Pleasant Bay, and I, I feel like they've, they've done a good job reducing those impacts, and I, I feel like we haven't quite caught up with the other areas in town.
So, Pleasant Bay is 65 feet?
Pleasant Bay is 250 feet.
250 feet.
Yeah, the rest of the town is 65.
Right. And the proposal here doesn't change the 65?
It doesn't change it.
Okay. Thank you.
And Michael, if I may, I was on the Pleasant Bay Alliance when they met, made some of these changes, and 250 was a long discussion then because, but I, but I think it's been successful on Pleasant Bay, you know, on that. And I believe that the other towns in, in the alliance pretty much adopted them. We didn't go quite as far because we have too many docks, docks in.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide, please. Okay, very quickly, here's the change in water depth at mean-low water from 2.5 feet to 3.0, and this was voted to advance this, and it's the same presently as the towns of Dennis and Yarmouth. Next slide, please, unless there's any questions. This is just a reference to one of the new studies that came out on shading impacts, and they found that the former criteria of 1.1, which is four feet high and four feet wide, could lead to a 50% reduction in plant biomass for Salt Marsh. So, that was quite concerning, and it, it's obvious, when you look at all the docks, you can see those shading impacts very clearly. So, what we're doing here is we've, we've decided to move towards 1.5 to 1, which is a six-foot to a high and four feet wide. This had no change on one species of Salt Marsh, but it still had a 25% reduction. So, it wouldn't eliminate shading completely, it would just reduce to what we thought was an acceptable level. Next slide, I think, yeah, this is, this incorporates those actual changes. And so, we're looking to expand the deck spacing between planks to three-quarter inches, and then set the elevation for Salt Marsh to one, excuse me, 1.5 to 1, six-foot height to four feet width. And I think, again, that was one that had good consensus among the participants and commission members. Next slide, please. Off-season storage, nothing really new here. We're just trying to clarify the language and reduce the impacts that we're seeing. Next slide, please. Dredging, again, you know, there was interest from, I think, the harbor master's office, the Waterways Board, on what can we do to try to dredge out some of these areas that are really silted in, and, and they're impacted by that silt. I think if you look at Whichmer Harbor and Allen Harbor, there's places like that, and we discussed it. It just was difficult because our, our present regs say you have to have 2.5 feet below your float, or you can't put it in. And it doesn't say you can dredge to reach that. So, we, we didn't really have a consensus on this, and so, in the end, we had no change. But it is something moving forward. I think everyone probably would like to find ways to maybe improve the habitats and the navigation in these smaller harbors like Whichmer and Allen's. And so, this could be something that's revisited at some point. Okay, protections for shellfish, we really just try to improve our language. We, we have languages, to me, is very clear. We're, we're not supposed to put new structures in places where there are shellfish. And yet, if we have a survey that shows that, we can give a variance to that. And in my time on the commission, we've approved about 90% of the dock applications on variances to this provision. So, we're trying to improve that language. And we talked about linking language from the shellfish survey to a criteria at which you would not allow a dock to go in, and we just, the science really wasn't there. It was just too hard to come up with a number. And so, we're just offering language improvements, try to make it clear. And then in places like Herring River, we're saying that we would like to see just a, you know, a timeout on new structures until we can learn more information.
Is, is Herring River the only proposed no new structures?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so protections for Salt Marsh, that, that first sentence is what's in our bylaws. Any structure proposed to be sighted on Salt Marsh shall not destroy any portion of the Salt Marsh. It's very clear, and yet I don't think we've done a great job with that one. And I think over time, we see these structures are impacting Salt Marsh, and so, we decided not to change this language. We, we felt we just have to do a better job of, you know, implementing it. Next one, please. Coastal banks, I feel like what we're seeing in some cases where you have an unaltered coastal bank, and then all of a sudden you put a dock in, it's natural for the property owners to want to use that bank in different ways. And so, you're seeing more clearing, more tree clearing, more encro- more encroachment. And, and you see coastal banks altered in that way. But at the same time, it's not like it's something's allowed to happen. It just happens naturally over time. So we did not make any decisions on changing the language. We just hoped we could be diligent to prevent those impacts. They're allowed a four-foot walkway to access the dock. And, and what you often see is encroachment on either side of that four-foot walkway. Next slide, please. Shellfish surveys, a lot of angst over this one because it's just so difficult to, um, get good information, interpret. What does it mean in terms of having a dock in place? Shellfish populations change over time, and they change in response to a lot of factors, not just structures. You can have natural environmental factors that affect recruitment of shellfish, which are independent of the structures. So it's very hard to really nail down criteria for shellfish surveys. And so we did our best to try to improve the language without actually, um, putting in strict criteria on if a shellfish survey produces this number of shellfish, here's what you should do. Okay, next, continued. We, we took a shot at defining how shellfish surveys should be. And we, we took a shot at developing thresholds, but we did not vote on any particular thresholds for this. Again, it, it could be a future item that needs more attention. Next slide, please. Cumulative impacts. Uh, we included a definition and tried to connect the bylaw to, uh, the concept of cumulative impacts. The Wetlands Protection Act, as well as Army Corps of Engineers, they, they both have provisions that recognize cumulative impacts. And I, I think people have known for a long time that in small, narrow waterways, it, it can be a significant concern. So we added language to give better definition to cumulative impacts. And I think that's it for slides. Yep, okay. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Brad. Don?
Uh, no, it's a lot to digest, uh, but this is a good first step. Like I said, I'm not even that expert in the area, but I don't expect people who are watching this out there to, to be fully, uh, conversing with it either. The only thing I will say is that there's a difference between voting to include it on the warrant and voting to actually support it. So it, I mean, I'm at the point where I'm convinced to allow that discussion to happen and support putting it on a warrant. I don't know how I feel about the second part because I'm not really smart enough to know right now.
Well, we'd be happy to come back at, at a later time and maybe give a more detailed, uh, presentation if necessary.
Plan on it. Mary?
I'm with Don. I certainly, uh, think it belongs on the warrant. Um, one question I have, you mentioned, or one of the two of you mentioned, you had had, um, several hearings. Were they well attended?
I'd have to say no. You know, four, four, three, three or four of the hearings were actually agenda items, uh, under discussion. And so they, they came after all of our normal business at, at towards the end of a meeting. And so we received input from the harbor master's office, from the Department of Natural Resources, from consultants that participate in this field. But I wouldn't say that they were well attended. We had two independent, maybe three independent meetings that were just single issue on this.
Yep.
And again, those, um, you know, really brought out, you know, some of the, the folks interact with these decisions, but not a lot of public participation.
Bear in mind, a lot of these projects are just so, so complex to begin with that they use consultants. So, you know, having the input from the consultants was very helpful.
Right.
Um, and, you know, I mean, some of the, some of the input you might get absent the consultants was not as well. Um, wasn't, it wasn't constructive, I guess is a good way to put it.
Okay. That's it.
Now, I, I appreciate the long hours that you, you and your committee spent discussing these items. You know, Brad, you mentioned, but the concern I've had, you and I've talked about many times, is the, uh, shellfish survey. Because everyone approaches that differently, it seems, and you get a standard procedure at least, that we can discuss it and compare one to the other. Uh, it's not perfect, but you made good strides in getting it forward. So that's, I appreciate that.
And, you know, one thing to bear in mind with respect to these surveys too, and, and Brad points it out very often, which has been instructive for me, but it, it's not only putting a dock in and, and then having the applicant put shellfish seed somewhere else in the river to repopulate the area. It's, it's the lot, loss of the habitat, really, which is the bigger issue. So you, you have a pristine area, a lot of shellfish in there, or maybe they're not at that time of year. Um, but then you put a walkway in, you put a float in, and the habitat is gone too. So it's, it's a, gets into that cumulative impact stuff as well.
The consultant reports that you mentioned, that's all part of the minutes, your minutes, the conservation meeting minutes?
Yeah, they, yeah, there was a couple of consultants who were quite active.
Anything that we can get on that, I think if you could distribute it to the board. I've had a, a fairly lengthy set of emails on this topic, as well as people calling me on this topic.
Yeah.
And, and Brad, um, absolutely no disrespect, and I appreciate how much time you've been on, um, marine fisheries, how many countless hours you've spent on conservation for the town of Harwich, and how much work you put on this. But in a previous, uh, article, we agreed that we would hire experts and that the homeowners would pay for it, um, you know, without a number in there. So we're gonna rely on consultants and experts for them and make them pay for it. And it would be important to me that in, in, in a, uh, change, a bylaw change this significant, that we demonstrate that we didn't just come up with cumulative impacts ourselves, and that we did our due diligence and relied on consultants. Uh, that's one point. Um, I tried to, um, compile everything I could into one note here. And, and I know the boards received one email. And it was a great statement. It says, "The town needs to seek to balance the, the legitimate interests of protecting our waterways and wetlands with individual private property rights." And I think private property rights are, are very important. Of course, we have to protect our environment, but private property rights should mean something. And I guess my first question would be, um, I have a dock on Herring River, and the pilings go bad, and some decking and some framework goes bad. What do I have to do?
This doesn't impact that?
Doesn't impact existing docks or pilings at all.
No.
If I have to replace pilings, I go through the normal process, and you're not gonna deny me.
All right. And, and I suppose our language could be really explicit in that regard.
And I think it needs to be because it's not in there.
Yeah.
Um, the language on prohibition on new waterway structures in Herring River should specifically not apply to existing licensed waterway structures, repair, rebuild, et cetera. And should contain the language included in, in the existing provision regarding Round Cove. So, uh, the existing provision Round Cove apparently has a much broader description than this has.
Yeah.
And I think that this resident thinks it's important that we put it in there, um, to, to get rid of confusion later on. And, and I thought that was a good suggestion.
And I think our intent was to just roll, if, if it was to go forward, roll the Herring River into that, that section that has Round Cove presently.
Um, just wanted, some of these you've already answered, so I don't want to include them. "The six-month maximum period to use a dock seems arbitrary and not really solving any significant problem." Could you address that? Because I really don't see why I can't keep my dock in for eight months.
Yeah, so it's May fifteenth to October fifteenth, I believe?
Well, that's for the float and the ramp.
Yeah.
We have been-
The float and the ramp are typically six months. Those are the things that typically make their way onto the salt marsh for the off-season and destroy it. That definitely, what we currently have is somewhat antiquated, um, where it said you have to remove a dock. We haven't been, that used to be, people would have stub piles and have to remove the entire walkway structure over the dock and some of the pilings that attach to the stubs and get them out. We don't typically require that anymore because we found that it's actually more invasive. So the ninety percent of your dock's structure, with the exception of the ramp and float, are allowed to now stay in. It's just that those, those end pieces that are actually in the waterway typically need to come out.
So is that a current regulation and not a bylaw? And if it is, who came up with that and why? And why can't I use my dock eight months out of the year if I'm a resident and taxpayer in this town? Scientifically, what, what is the difference?
I, I would say for tidal areas, um, there's no consequence to going from six to eight months.
So is that a change that you would, could the board will consider?
Yeah, I, I've made a note. We, we could. I mean, that's, um, I think for freshwater locations, you get involved with, uh, some species that spawn in the shoals. And so installing a dock in the middle of a spawning period in a pond, long pond, for example, is probably not a great idea. For tidal areas, I, I don't see a problem. And if somebody wants to go ground fishing, they certainly want to try to go on either side of May and October.
Yeah, I, I think a lot of people that have docks in front of their houses have boats and like to fish. There is several people that we put boats on docks in July first, and they don't use them until August fifteenth. But that's not everybody. To make a bylaw out of that seems exactly what they said.
Yeah, we, we're not proposing that change. Um, so, but we, we could possibly clarify the language on that period. But that did not come up in discussion. And, but if we, if we are making changes, it makes sense to, you know, make as many changes as necessary.
Actually, that letter was the first time I heard about some concerns over that six month period.
That one particular email really kind of outlined some language that I think the commission should look at, because I think that they make sense.
Yeah, that, that'd be a pre-existing language that we didn't address. And tidal areas, I can't see a, a, a large problem with, you know, expanding on either side of that May and October period.
And lo, and lastly, so we can move on, the, the flat prohibition on new structures. I think I heard you say a little while ago that if they count the shellfish and they show no environmental him, impact, that, that a structure may be available to them. Is that not the case?
No, the, the regulations basically say that no new structures can be placed in a shellfish area as defined by town regulations or the town shellfish ward.
Okay.
So that's kind of what the language says right now. Uh, if there was a location where that happened, we've had a couple of places where they were advanced with very little debate because the shell, the survey found almost nothing. But in most cases, where there are shellfish, we've granted variances. And to me, that's, that's really, we, we need to improve the efficiency of the process to make it clearer as to, um, what's allowed and how it's done. So a moratorium came up to be for Herring River because of the concern for that area as, as a very sensitive area where we're not avoiding impacts at this point.
Without going into specifics too, Mr. Chairman, we've had a project on this side of, of, um, Whichmer Harbor that's been just rife with shellfish. And exactly on the other side of the harbor, we find none. So, you know, uh, when you get an application from both of those property owners, you have to deal with them differently. But-
Another reason why I think the moratorium was not suggested for outside of that Herring River.
So can we agree that based on some of what I've mentioned and some of the, um, your willingness to change the language, that we should bring this one back before we vote to put it on the annual town meeting or subject to change? As Don said, um, there's nothing on here to say we support it, just that we're gonna put it on the, uh, on the warrant. But some of those language changes, I think, are important.
Yeah, the two that I have jotted down is the, the grandfathering existing structures. We need to be explicit that that's allowed. And then the second one is to, um, tune the period at which docks can be allowed in the water, which isn't part of this update, but we could make it part of the update.
Mary?
And one piece, one piece to clarify on that, the, um, Herring River, the example Michael gave, if it was destroyed and you had to build new, I assume that we would then require that you build new according to these new changes. They couldn't, they're not grandfathered into building, uh, the one to one ratio. They'd have to go the one to five.
Right now, it's not explicit. We, we didn't, we did not go there. Um, I, I would like to think that we would try to reduce impacts if we rebuild structures, but I think, um, many cases, grandfathering is as it sounds. If you're allowed to replace the structure and kind.
With, okay.
That's probably the way they would go.
If you have to-
I think it should just be clear, which it is.
Yeah.
And I agree, Mary. I, I want it clear, but I could never support taking away something somebody already has.
Right, right.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, a government geek thought. Uh, if you're doing this and you, and you're addressing what Michael was saying, bear in mind, that was the reason and I was explicitly pushing this towards an annual town meeting as opposed to, uh, a special town meeting. There is a time limit here. I mean, you gotta start addressing this now because by January, then we need to have some final language for the, uh, the warrant article. That way, people have several months to be able to look it over, digest it, and get to vote on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, like that notes for two, two adjustments.
We should be able to get revised language. And do you want us to present it again formally to, to you folks or just?
I don't think you need to. I think if you show us in a yellow line version that those language changes, then I would support it. Of course, we don't have to support it. You can bring it forward any way you want. We just have to vote to get it on the warrant. Those are my criticisms of it, not the entire board's or vote to ask you to change it. It's just-
I think it'd be fairly simple to make those changes.
So if, if, uh, you know, if the board wanted to vote to put this on the warrant subject to those changes, then we could dispose of this tonight and then look at it afterwards.
Do we do that?
I, I do. Uh, because this isn't the final say. We'll have some revisions. And so I would, I would move to, uh, add the, uh, let me get the language here. The why, the why dependent structure, uh, article in the town warrant for May of twenty twenty-two?
Second.
And, and with the change-
With the revisions that you're considering.
And that's your second?
That's my second.
Don?
Uh, I'm sorry, but I can't support that because I don't know what I'm supporting. If I see language, it's just what you said, yeah, great. I'd vote in favor of this. Otherwise, I'm, I'm gonna have to vote no now.
Do you want to wait to get a four zero vote and bring it back? Or would you like to just go forward with getting it on the warrant three to one tonight?
May I defer to Amy on this tonight? Because she's gonna use-
I'd, I'd prefer to have it lined up, queued up for the warrant if, if it is a three to one vote. Um, I don't think four to zero is necessary. I think your comments and what we need to provide to you are fairly clear. And so tho, those two items, uh, won't be hard to-
No.
And, and those are not controversial items.
Yeah, just a question of timing. A, Amy, do you think we could have those within a month? Two weeks?
Not two weeks, but a month.
Okay, fair enough.
You don't want to know what the next agenda looks like.
Um, I feel your pain. I didn't open it up, so before I call for a vote, I did not open it up to anyone in the public. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this article? Okay, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Three, one, Joe? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, historic and historical warrant article. Mary?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Where are we?
We are on-
Oh, the special town meeting.
Jay. Yep.
Mary Maslowski for the record.
MO by law.
Chair of the Harwich Historic District and Historical Commission. So I believe we are here this evening to discuss briefly our, um, proposed term, changes to the demolition delay bylaw. So the, uh, HDHC this year took a look at what existed, um, took into consideration some of the issues that we have around town and some of the issues that we have on various, uh, notice of intent applications, which is what comes before us when there is a, um, a building that is a hundred years of age or older within the town of Harwich. Um, and took a stab at some of the, the larger issues that we face. I would probably say there are three major changes to this demo delay bylaw. One is the board tried to address the situation where you have demolition by neglect. All you need to do is go down Route twenty-eight in West Harwich and look and see what's happened to the old Bishop's Terrace and other buildings. Um, this bylaw tries to make it more clear that the town can order a property owner to board up the building, and if they don't, the town can take other action, including court orders to, um, try and close in and protect those buildings. Um, in addition to that, we have, uh, added a provision where if someone demolishes a significant structure, which is, comes under the definition of the bylaw, and they do it without a permit or without the approval, then they will, um, be kept from getting a building permit for two years. It gives, uh, a real incentive to make sure that, that , uh, the property owners are following the rules and coming before the, the commission and following the rules for, uh, the building department. Unfortunately, it's happened. It's happened any number of times before I got on the Historic Commission, and it happens from time to time. Um, sometimes people also exceed the demolition, um, permit that they have. Uh, that instance happened on Forest Street where the building was supposed to be, uh, somewhat demolished and renovated, keeping, um, significant structures intact with the old building, and it was razed to the ground. So both the zoning, that person was before both Historic and Zoning Board of Appeals. Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, addressed it as well as Historic. So, um, we're trying to address situations, uh, like that. The third major change is to move, um, currently the- currently the HDHC has the ability to impose a 12-month demolition delay. The new proposal is 18 months. And to be quite honest, what we've found is that a 12-month delay doesn't really give an applicant any incentive to work with us. I think the commission in, in, particularly in the last few years, we have really tried to work with applicants. Especially when they're looking to do 100% demolition, we've tried to at least get some of the characteristics of the prior building into the new building so that you don't lose all of the character of the historic building that's being demolished. You can't, it's not always 100%. Unfortunately, you tend to lose the scale of the original historic building, but at least you get some of the characteristics. We're hopeful that the 18 months by giving an extra six months to the board to be able to extend that demolition delay will incentivize some of the applicants to try and work with us on some of the aesthetic characteristics on, on the buildings that are replacing these, these old historic homes. So those are the three major changes to this proposed demolition delay bylaw. We did, the board members, particularly Gene Steiner, Bob Joan, and Brendan Loney had done a lot of work on trying to get this where it is now. As you know, we didn't have it proposed for this, the last town meeting, I thought.
Annual, yes.
And we kicked that because of COVID. At this point, we do also have a new planning director. And we had spoken at our last meeting that we'd be happy to have him and any other town staff review it for any additional proposals or, or prospective changes that they would feel would be beneficial to the demolition delay bylaw. So we're happy to take a look at any other suggested changes that people may have and any other improvements. And I think there'd be plenty of time for us to do that before getting it on a warrant for the spring town meeting. So we are happy, I'm happy to answer any questions you have and the board would be happy to entertain any suggestions as well.
Thank you, Mary. Larry?
Thank you, Mary. They sound reasonable to me, but as I recall, when this was, when this was a town meeting before, just going to the one year, was hotly debated. Have you had a chance to present this in a public forum to see what the feedback would be?
So we, we have agended it every time we've talked about it. We haven't had any large-scale public hearings for it. We're happy to do that as well.
So maybe this will help.
I do think, you know, I, I do think on balance, it's, it's a little different than imposing a full demolition delay bylaw when one didn't exist before. I think it's trying to tweak it. And I do think, you know, as many people, while there may be many people against it, I think you will find that there are a significant number of people that, that do support some of the changes. We do have members of the public that show up every time there is a, a 100% demolition proposed to, voice their, voice their concerns, so.
As for conservation, we, this is our past discussion, the more we can get out there, because I know this is going to be a hot, hot topic.
Absolutely. We, we've discussed doing that, so we're happy to do so. I do think it would probably be prudent to wait and see if any town staff had some, had some proposals and then once, if we got some, if and when we get some revisions, we could propose a, a public hearing that can be timed well enough in time for town meeting.
Can I just, one, one other question? You infer at least, or maybe state that people have demolished or taken, is that after they've come to you and they ignored it? They, they're not aware of the bylaws that we have now?
So I think, I think our demo delay bylaw right now is pretty broad. And I think sometimes it can be by mistake and sometimes people feel it's easier to, to apologize afterwards than to ask permission before. So this is just aimed at making sure that the penalties are clear. And that, I, I think if, if the notion is out there that you're going to have to wait two years for a building permit, then you're more apt to pay attention as opposed to having, you know, a couple of days' worth of fines and penalties.
Okay.
Mary?
I don't have any questions, Mary. That looks pretty.
Thank you.
Well-written.
Don?
Ditto. Thanks for the hard work.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So my only, my only concern is the 18-month, but I think voting to put it on the warrant is the right thing to do and let the voters decide. But I think 18 months is an awful lot to ask somebody that buys a house that is in rough shape, that just met the 100 years with no significant person living there that they have to wait 18 months to build their dream home, but.
And the reason behind it is that we've had feedback from some builders that 12 months doesn't bother them. That that's their regular building schedule anyway, so, so go ahead and impose the 12 months and we'll just, we'll just wait it out because that's when we were going to demolish the building anyway. So that was the feedback that we had that, that prompted members of the board to propose the, the 18 months. But I completely understand that and respect that and, and I agree, the voters will decide at town meeting whether, whether it's up or down.
So this article's been in existence for a year and a half and we've made no action on this. Do we want to vote to put it on the warrant?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion?
I move that we put the historic, historical warrant article on the 22 town warrant.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Anyone in the public?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four-zero, Joe?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Vote to approve 2021 special town meeting warrant. First up is accept finance committee recommendations. Joe, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to pig in the hall to see that the finance committee chairman's still available. He was here earlier. Excuse me, I'm also handing out to the board the memorandum that I sent you folks Friday evening talking about some adjustments that the board may wish to consider before you close this. Before you close this warrant, and it is my fervent hope that the board is able to finalize this process this evening. We have seven signature pages, all for original signatures, so we begin the next process of advertising and posting. So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, first to inform the board that the finance committee met their charter obligations last Thursday evening, September 17th, and they went through all 14 articles that you see in the warrant in front of you. And in every instance, the finance committee voted seven to zero to recommend adoption. And so what you have in front of you is a warrant that reflects all of those votes and actions, however. Then draw your attention to the memorandum I passed around and the one, two, three, four, five bullet points that impact upon either some scrivener's errors or just actions that the board may want to contemplate. With that, Mr. Chairman, if I could draw your attention to the draft warrant and page 11, which is the discussion on Article 8. So as you may recall, the language that I've put in that article was meant to be broad enough to cover all non-union personnel, which was evidenced by personnel by law employees and/or personal services contracts. The original number that was in there that the board voted was 39,843. That number did not include your four personal services contract employees. However, the number that was presented to the finance committee Thursday evening is the number that you see in the warrant, 53,401, because that dollar amount was updated to reflect all non-union personnel, be they personnel bylaws and/or personal services. So I bring that to the board's attention. I can certainly answer any questions from the board and make any recommendations. But wanted the board first to be aware of that change in the language.
So, Joe, I'll start on that one. And as you and I discussed the other day, I have a problem with this. This was something that the board never took up. We did not anticipate or, or plan this town meeting based on giving raises. It was based on contracts that we negotiated that we had to go get funding for. Being that the board never had this conversation, yet it was presented to the finance committee, I'd say the system's broken. The board should have had the opportunity to have this conversation. Before I call on the other board members, I would say that this should have come with employee evaluations that we do before we give the raises. So I think that this whole thing was taken out of sequence and it never should have gotten to the finance committee on this level before the board of selectmen had a conversation or voted it. So I guess I'll get your take on what I just said and then I'll turn it over to other board members.
I, I wouldn't dispute or disagree with anything you said, Mr. Chairman. My recommendation this evening is that the, the board vote to reflect the original number, the 39,843, which covers everybody else in the personnel bylaws. The finance committee chair is now aware of it. I can work with his committee for them to take a further action to see if their vote changes. If their vote changes, that'll be reflected in the motions book that we distribute at town meeting as we would with any motions or language changes that need to take place after the warrant is closed. So my recommendation would be to reflect what the board voted as early as, as late as your meeting last Monday and, and go that route rather than the increased dollar amount.
Thank you, Joe. I'll start with Mary.
I'm just a little confused. Normally, we don't have a meeting in, in October. So how would this have happened normally?
So I would think that the, the question of how would we handle cost of living adjustments within the fiscal year is you would have what is common practice here of a special within an annual. So I talk about the annual town meeting in 200-plus days. Incorporated in that warrant would be the annual town meeting warrant and there could be a separate but concurrent warrant whereby the board and finance committee and town meeting could make appropriations that were not already voted that impact upon the current fiscal year before you then finalize the next fiscal year. So standard operating practice would be a special within the annual.
I'm good with backing it out to the 39, 38, 39, eight? Yeah.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I not only agree with Mary, but to the extent that the last thing we voted was the lower number, no action means the number that we had is the number that we go with.
Larry?
Yeah, this tick was the number we voted on and go back to regular order.
Clear, Joe?
Yep.
I think the rest of them kind of speak for themselves. The water department, the funding mechanism, we voted with free cash and that's going to come from retained earnings.
If I may, it would be helpful to have a, a motion and a vote of the board to direct that change from the higher number to the earlier, is it a lower number? If you wanted to build it off that first bullet point, the memo, that might be the appropriate action to go with.
Don, you want to take a stab at that?
Yeah, I would like to vote that we reaffirm the original dollar amount of Article 8 as being $39,843 is the amount being sought.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
John Shory, Finance Committee. And how would this affect, I guess, my, my question to Joe on this, Michael. How would this affect our vote, Joe? And is there anything I have to do immediately to, to concur with the selectmen? I mean, because if, if, if my committee votes to keep the number and the selectmen vote to keep the 39,000, what happens then?
So there would be a change in the language in the warrant that is going to be reflected in the motions book that we rely upon in the intervening times, meaning there's a deadline to get the warrant done. We need to get that done this evening. If there's reconsiderations or if there's changes of any sort, the finance committee can meet at a future meeting, either reaffirm your vote for the higher number, affirm the number voted by the board tonight or any other action, and then town meeting will be informed of those as part of the motion.
Okay, so there's nothing immediately I have to do with my committee?
Correct.
And could you clarify something that I've heard? That in a special town meeting, both the finance committee and the selectmen have to agree equally before that warrant can be put in, I mean, that article can be put in the warrant according to town charter. Is that correct?
No, my understanding of the town charter is that the both boards have to meet separately to make their recommendations, which you've done.
But we don't have to agree?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Joe, Article 10?
Thank you. Under Article 10, which is on page 12, you can see there that the original language that we talked about made reference to free cash. Of course, it would have to be retained earnings from Water Enterprise. So you'll see under the line that says funding source, that has been updated to reflect that it's Water Enterprise retained earnings. I would argue on that one, that's a funding source. It doesn't change anything to the language itself and it doesn't change the quantum of the article that was presented, but I'll defer to the board and any actions you want to take.
Don, you sat up.
Yeah, I move that we accept the updated version of the language specifying retained earnings as the basis for the money.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, right after that, transfer of surplus bond proceeds, Article 11. The dollar amount has actually been reduced by $2,000, so the, the warrant article does have a lower dollar number. I believe this is the dollar number that was presented to the finance committee. And so I'm, I apologize, I don't know the explanation as to why the dollar amount went down, but the number changed and so that what brings for you this evening.
Don, down is good.
Yeah, as a matter of policy, the motion is going to dictate whatever the approval amount is. We don't have to do anything.
Fine by me. I just wanted the board to be where the number changed.
Good with that, Larry?
I am because Don's right. The motion always lists the number.
Okay, Article 13.
Thank you. Article 13, which you will now find on page 14. There are two language changes. They're both deletions. Within the original article, it talked about the words "or lease." That is not being contemplated, so the words "or lease" were deleted. And it erroneously stated originally that it required a two-thirds vote. It does not. So those were deletions that were made. And again, I defer to the board if you determine if there needs to be action to reflect those.
Don?
There again, I think the motion would clarify that. We don't necessarily need to take any action on the actual body of the warrant language.
Okay with that, Mary?
Yeah.
Larry?
I'm not sure I agree with on the "or lease," if that should be.
Go ahead and make a motion.
Go ahead.
Should be taken up. I move we, move, states a warrant article 13 as stated in the draft warrant, accepting, we delete the phrase "or lease."
While we're at it, why don't we add "and two-thirds vote"?
And two-thirds vote, so we have them both. I wasn't so concerned about that, but yeah.
Second.
And still accept and adopt with those changes.
Right. And accept and adopt with those changes.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The last one appears on that same page, Article 14, fund prior year's unpaid bills. Since you saw this last, it's changed twofold. The overall total for the article now reads as $10,405.33. And the reason for that increase is, you can see the last three items are added to that total. All of them are bills related to Structures North. All of those bills relate to CPC article from 2019 under Article 41, which relates to the Brooks Museum work that's being done. And so that's why the two edits are reflected in that language.
Motion?
Sure. I move that we accept the Article 14 as described by the town administrator. And the overall total has been increased to $10,000, $10,405.33.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just out of curiosity, these are unpaid bills? They exceeded the CPC allocation in some way or what?
Good evening. Carol Coppola, Finance Director. These are invoices for prior fiscal year that the town did not receive until just last week.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And then finally, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the last action we would ask you to take this evening is to vote to close the warrant so that the board can sign it and we can publish and post.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. As promised, multiple signature pages with our seven versions.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Please, and thank you.
So the next up is a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Howard Housing Committee. So members of the Howard Housing Committee, if you want to join us up here. We have the table, and we always have chairs down here at the end. Anyone that wants to sit in those.
Mary, I won't... Joe McParland's here. I'm not sure that anyone else from Housing is here. Can we just go look in the hall floor?
All right.
I think Joe McParland was in the building moments ago, so I'm not sure where he is, but...
We'll start without him.
I'll be a member of one.
We'll start without him, and since there's only two, I would say you probably don't have to call your meeting to order. You don't have a quorum anyway, and here he is.
Here's Joe.
There we go. Here's Joe.
Mary, we took up several weeks ago and continued last week and then continued into this week, the current Housing Committee charge. And Joe, welcome. Just state your name for the record.
Joe McParland.
Great.
Judy.
Thank you.
Key distinction there.
So we took up the Housing Committee charge and the thought of changing the charge. Four to five weeks ago, I sent each board member an email asking them or sending them the charge and asking them if they thought the charge was an adequate charge or if that we should change the charge, and also in concert with the new housing trust. I did get one response. The boards had some conversation, but there's a detailed note in the packet tonight from Mary Selectman Anderson. Mary did kind of a deep dive into it. Joe, I know you were at a meeting that Mary had. But with that and the thoughts of changing the Housing Committee charge, I will turn this over to Mary, to start anyway.
Okay. Let's start with "It is never my goal to create hate and discontent," which I realize some of this has done. What I really was trying to do was to get a conversation going, and perhaps the next best step would be a joint meeting with the trust and with the committee to then try to meld who's doing what. I personally think there's tons of work around housing, and we need all hands rowing in the same direction, and I feel like there's been somewhat of a schism or silos or I don't know what, but the only way I know how to move forward is try to get us together and talk. So that was my goal in that meeting. Certainly, the goals we came up with are, this was by no means intended to be a dictatorship. This was to get conversation going, as well as the list of who that group thought were appropriate for the meeting. So I'd appreciate hearing from the two of you, where you think we should go.
So I'll be honest, I've been on the Housing Committee for upwards of four years at least. We have never really had much to do while we've been there. We were generally looking at projects that were coming before us, and then as an advisory board to the Board of Selectmen, it's really what you folks want us to do. My personal opinion is whatever you folks tell us you want us to do is really where we should be focusing our time and energy. And when I came on, it was really at the beginning of the time where the Affordable Housing Trust was being talked about and was being started, and there really wasn't a whole heck of a lot for us, going on for us to review. It was right at the tail end of Habitat getting permitted. So I'm happy to take whatever charge the Selectmen see fit to have us do. It'd be nice to have something to do, and I think that's, I think that's part of it, and I think Joe would agree that it's a frustration when you, you know, you're going to a meeting and there's nothing really for you to do at any particular point in time. That being said, understand that other boards have other charges, and, you know, we, I think, want to be there to support the other boards and commissions as opposed to step on anyone's feet, so.
And I agree. I've done a little bit of research on my own with the surrounding towns, so I took, I spoke to the housing coordinators, which is part of this discussion, I'm sure we'll get into in a minute, but it seems that Yarmouth, for example, a bigger town, you know, they have more activity, more things going on, and then Brewster, both of them having very strong housing coordinators, and essentially, those housing coordinators, they work with all three boards, all three entities, in a very, very tight manner. I mean, Jill Scalisi, for example, in Brewster, she does a report and briefs all three boards what she's done, what she's doing on a weekly basis, and so that's the part-time job we were talking about. And I can get it for you, I just didn't have time. They have multiple projects going and already have done many, many things in housing because of the way that they're set up. Because all three of these entities are speaking to each other, and they all have clear roles and responsibilities. To Mary's point, I've only been on that Housing Committee for two years, but we never really had a mission statement or anything. We were, you know, we're at the pleasure of the Selectmen, of the board, but there really wasn't anything for us to do. What, in one of the towns, the Housing Committee, for example, everything, anything that comes to the board for, the Housing Committee for housing issues, it goes to the Housing Committee first. In Brewster, for example, they vet it, they do the checkoff, and it goes forward to the other entities that are responsible for really, you know, like Don, it goes very well, the Housing Trust is very, very important in terms of finding the land, finding the property. That's, I feel that that's their role. I think our role, the strong role that we should have in Housing Committee is, I always have said this for two years, I mean, why don't, at a very minimum, why don't we be the voice? Why aren't we not having quarterly public meetings, bi-yearly, whatever? What do the town, people in the town want to see? You know what I mean? Because I've heard many, many things from many people in this room and outside, and everybody has an opinion. You know, cluster, I've seen Don stuff I agree with, it should all be in different parts of the community, housing of all kinds. There's just so much to do, to your point, but I think it starts and ends with the town people. What do they want to see to create, to create a real good plan going forward?
Mary?
I just want to point out, like, one of the things that we do have to be careful of, though, is that whatever we're reviewing and when we're reviewing it, we're doing it at the right time, because we were in the situation with Mr. Wise's development that came before us with a stack of plans that weren't fully developed then to get our ideas, and we were, we were of the understanding in our meeting that we were supposed to be reviewing it, and when, when one of the staff people called for a vote, I questioned whether we were prepared to have a vote, because we weren't, there was nothing, there was finalized, there was no application, and we were asked to take a vote in principle on what we had seen there, and then, as you know, it came before you, it wasn't an application, and we were in the situation of reversing it all out. And I think that just highlights the conundrum that we are in as a board, that we need to take direction from, and take that direction and take that action at the right time, because when it's not, it turns into a nightmare.
Say the least. Mary, would you do, and the hate and discontent that you opened with, I saw it very differently, and I would say that as one board member, I appreciated your deep dive into this, and I think a new set of eyes, an extra set of eyes, and a new person that's interested in housing shouldn't offend anybody. I'm very familiar with open meeting law. Nothing was done illegally here, and you presented exactly as asked to the entire board for the board to make a decision in concert with the committee. So thank you, and I personally don't think you did a thing wrong. Would you just go through your points?
Sure.
And then I'll open it up to other board member to have, board members to have a conversation about their thoughts.
As I mentioned, the two things we looked at is the role of the Housing Committee, and we had setting goals and priorities, outreach, perhaps quarterly meetings that Joe alluded to, where all town members are invited to come and review and discuss housing options, creating the RFP housing plans for the town, and perhaps that should be with the trust, and updating the housing production plan. As an aside, I think that's probably a great one to start with. I got so excited when I read that, but it was written in two thousand and sixteen, and then when I tried to find out where's the updates, it's like a term paper. It got written and filed, and we probably got an A, but never went forward. So that's the roles that we came up with. And then in terms of who should be on the Housing Committee, trying to get, Brewster's motto is "It takes a village to build a village," and I so believe that. So our suggestion for the members, not by name, a member of the housing authority, a member of the Affordable Housing Trust, and nothing personal against the Selectmen or the Town Administrator, but it was this group's belief that it should be somebody at large, not somebody already in a position of authority. Oh, I just went blank. A member of the CPC, a member of the Planning Board, the Town Planning Director, and then two citizens interested in housing. So those were our suggestions.
Thank you.
The last thing we talked about is it appeared the towns which are, and this was to this small group of, I don't know, four or five of us, the towns that seemed to be most effective had housing coordinators that worked for the town's administrative staff so that they worked with everybody, and we'd have that person report either to the Town Administrator or his designee.
Thank you, Mary. Mary?
Just two quick comments. As far as the housing production plan is concerned, I tend to think that really requires staff input, and the Town Administrator may disagree with me. I mean, I think, I think this board and all of the housing board should play a role in that, but that's something that's typically updated on a, I want to say, every five-year basis. It was done in two thousand and sixteen, and as I recall, the Town Planner was fully involved in doing that at the time and working with a consultant as well, I believe, that they put it together. So...
And John did say that when he spoke to us a month or so ago, that the first step is the, help me, local comprehensive plan, and then that would drive the... I was thinking more than updating that plan is just the page with all the action. There were a whole ton of goals there, and just getting that updated, did this project happen?
I think the body, the body of it feeds those action items, and I don't know that we've made a lot of progress on those, on those five or six or 10 action items that were in that in two thousand and sixteen.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking about, there was, there was the prospect of hotel motel conversions. I think we did do the ADU bylaw. We made changes to our, although we already had one, we had made changes to that on the Planning Board, so, and that was adopted at Town Meeting, so things like that have changed. I don't know that we've, if I remember the number correctly, because I seem to repeat it an awful lot, it was twenty-two units a year that were required in order for us to get to our numbers for forty-B, and I doubt very much that we've come anywhere near twenty-two units a year from two thousand and sixteen forward, so that, to me, just says we're behind the eight ball again.
Right.
So typically, that, that housing production plan would get updated every five years, and I think it's important as far as being able to get some grant monies and other state programs as well, if I recall, but I would defer to administration to confirm that or not, but...
Certainly, there's no reason why you can't make suggestions on the update of the housing production plan as part of a charge.
Absolutely. It's part of the role. I just, I just want to, I don't think it's something that this board would be necessarily appropriate to be fully charged with.
Right.
And the Director of Planning said that that comes after our local comprehensive, so we're very clear on that, but we certainly, there's nothing to stop us from gathering information now for a future document. I'll open it up to Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, Mary hit on one of the two points already. Three and four, it all, and apologies to Joe here, that we're conflating two different things here, the structure, the relationships, and the charge are like different thoughts. In terms of the three and four for the Housing Committee role, I'd feel a lot more comfortable with assisting in RFPs, because you don't issue them, trust doesn't issue them. It's actually a staff function in procurement. And assist in updating the housing production plan, because both the trust and the Housing Committee are charged with working together to create a production plan, but it would have to be staffed, because it's a really complex outreach endeavor for the public. Joe's absolutely right, though. I mean, getting together, whatever the schedule that you want to pick, and creating workshops develop an apparent need that the public can see for why we would want affordable housing, the need for affordable housing, but also why we would want affordable housing, because some of the stakeholders are actually business owners that are desperate to have people work there, and there's no place to put them, you know, for rentals. So those are absolutely important goals. As for the wise thing, it was vexing. That was a period of transition where the Town Administrator was departing, and the reality was, in order to get them off the dime, we said, okay, there's no there there, come out with a plan. And somehow, that got translated into, well, let's go to the Housing Committee, was still without a real plan, and get them to approve it before anybody sees the plan. It was backwards, and it blew up, which predictably is what should have happened, because there was, and Mary was, as I recall, was the vote against it, because there wasn't a plan at that point.
I don't know how it came to us, but it did.
Yeah, it was a not, it was a real not-plan plan. In terms of the membership, we finally got five people that have been appointed to the Housing Committee. So I would hate to make somebody walk the plank, but I will note that the Town Planner, Planning Director would normally, just as it is with the Planning Board and the ZBA, staff expert support, so you probably don't want them on the committee as much as technically advising the committee. Am I wrong there?
The reason that came up in the list of those particular people is because we really thought, one, those people are coming from these different boards, have a lot to give.
No, this was the direct, the actual employee, the Planning Director.
Oh.
I was, I was pitching that the way this works with the Planning Board and it works with the ZBA is that you get the planner to be your technically proficient staff support. They're not voting members of either of those committees.
Okay, okay, yeah.
And you're right, that was never specified who the heck helps you.
Right, right. It's, yeah, I'm sorry, that was an aside. It just, it just, we thought it gave us real teeth as a committee if we had those people from the various other boards and authorities, you know, on the committee.
Oh, I agree. It's just putting staff as a voting member of a committee is kind of...
You can always look to expand the Housing Committee, too, and have a larger number of members.
Sure.
I believe it's only, I believe it's a bylaw committee, correct, and not a charter committee?
No, it was created by the Board of Selectmen.
Advisory.
Oh, that's right, it's an advisory committee, so you can always look to expand the numbers.
Advisory committee, we could make it a hundred people, God forbid.
Right, it doesn't have to be, stay at five if you wanted it to be seven or nine to add people.
Mary, you have a follow-up?
Just to clarify, so you're suggesting the Planning Director should not be a member of the committee but be an advisor, almost like we're liaisons to...
Assigned to, yeah.
Okay. That makes sense to me.
He would be the representative instead of one of you, Select, you know how you used to be the...
No, they'd still be, Mary's the liaison.
Okay.
But, and Steve Ford was the liaison before that. No, what I'm saying is that they're there to give you technical information that you would create policy out of the, advise the Board of Selectmen.
And we do that often with staff on committees, that they just, our police chief attended almost, or deputy police chief almost every one of our ad hoc noise containment committee meetings as a resource, so I agree with Don.
But to Mary's point, nobody's tasked with that currently. It's not in writing that the Town Planner has to give advice to them. They wind up being the orphaned children in this town.
Right. Joe?
I would simply say to that, the staff resource allocation is my job and my requirement. I would simply say to that, the staff resource allocation is my job and my requirement. And so however the board sees fit to establish that, administration will always provide the appropriate staff resources to make sure those groups are successful.
Thank you. I'm going to get, thank you. I'm going to get to Larry.
Thank you for your meetings tonight. I'm not going to get into detail, thank you, Mary and Don, in moving us forward. I am pleased, though, that we're having this discussion. And Joe, I appreciate your comments. Because I don't want to oversimplify this, but it seems to me that your fundamental purpose is to be the voice to the public on gaining ideas and what the needs are and what, and not only for capital 40B, but small 40B. You know, we get housing, bring that in. Because we created the housing trust two years ago, Don, is that right?
2018.
Almost three.
Boy, time flies. But, you know, that purpose was to implement those ideas and make it happen. And we've had some success with that now. And so they should all be working together, you know, hand in glove. And so just having a meeting here and that discussion is essential. And I appreciate the details you're talking about, but that's where I am on bottom line. It's just somehow it got complicated. Let's simplify it.
Right. One of the biggest things I found in talking to those other towns, Brewster particularly, if I heard communication once, I heard a thousand times between all three boards, but also just communicating to the public all the time and letting them know what we're doing, what do you want to have, what would you like to see happen, you know? And it's been very successful with them, the communication piece. They have their own Facebook, they have their own social media stuff out there just for the housing. And it's working really well.
Moving this forward a little bit, does anyone have? Don, I totally agree with you about the planner, town planner. Is there anyone else on this list? Because if we keep the five that you finally got to.
Look at the four, Mary's on the planning board.
Okay.
Oh, that's right.
Mary, and both of us are on CPC, so take your pick.
And both of you on CPC?
Pretty quick.
Oh, that's right, so, yeah.
So technically, then we would be five, adding planning and CPC.
I mean, you still could add. I'm not suggesting that you don't add, if you want to add, go right ahead.
A member of the Affordable Housing Trust, that makes great sense. And then the member of the housing authority. Any, go ahead, Mary.
I did talk to Tracy, her last name escapes me, on the housing authority. What is it?
Cannon.
I spoke with her before our meeting even, just, you know, I think I'm the liaison to them as well.
Yeah.
And she would be very interested in being more involved with both groups. So I don't think she would have a problem hopping on this committee.
Is she a Harwich resident?
I don't know that.
No conversation, other than the mic, please. If you're going to talk, come up to the mic.
I'll find out.
Mary, can you just tell us who she is? Sorry.
Tracy Cannon.
Tracy Cannon, she's the executive director of the Harwich, help me. Housing Authority. So that's really like a state agency. So they manage the properties, and I believe Elizabeth's going to.
Right, she is a resident of Chatham.
Okay.
So could not be a voting committee member, but she could certainly, like the town planner, serve in an advisory, educational capacity, because she's very good at that.
That gets you to seven.
Thank you.
What's that, Don? That gets you to seven. Yeah.
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 Gets us beyond seven.
She'd be advisory.
Advisory, yeah. And if I might, Mr. Chair, we do, I think we could benefit from going from five to seven because this has been like a lonely endeavor for some of these people. At certain points, it's been like two, maybe three, tops. If you're going to hold symposia and workshops, you can't do it with one or two persons. You know, it's just, it's daunting.
So to move this along again, five, five, and that would include both of you in your dual roles, the member of the Affordable Housing Trust and the member of the housing authority puts us at seven. Is the board okay with that makeup?
I am.
Larry is?
Yes.
So, Don, you are?
Just to clarify, Mr. Chair, he'll be the CPC rep, and I'll be the planning board rep. Does that make sense?
Sounds good.
Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
Okay, just for clarity.
So Joe is CPC and you're planning, Mary?
Yeah.
Joe would be CPC, and I would be planning.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm the planning board rep to the CPC, too, so that's fine.
You're confusing me, knock it off.
Aren't you?
Too many roles. So.
Too many boards.
Looking at the, looking at the charge, you know, Mary's got some highlights here, and I think some we agree on. Don, I think your points were great, that assist in under three and four makes more sense to do the assist in. So how do we get from this point to a charge that makes sense? Do we want to see if Mary wants to take a stab at a charge through a working group and bring it back to the board? Don?
Yeah, actually, I mean, one thing I do want to get clear, though, if they got five members, she could sit with two of them. That's not a violation of the open meeting law. It would be for us, but it's not for them.
Posted it as a meeting anyway, so.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that as a working group, if you two and Mary actually worked on draft of what that language looks like incorporating what we just said.
It's fine.
Okay.
But those are the two big areas.
I am okay.
Larry, are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. So we'll look to have something back within the next, let's say, two weeks so that we can keep moving this forward and not talk about it for another year?
Is that good with both of you, two weeks?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Good, thank you.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust. Whoever's on the Affordable Housing Trust. Joe, you have to. That wants to join us.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, as Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, I would identify by roll call the members present. We have Larry Brophy, we have Judith Underwood, we have Selectmen Howell and myself as members. Member Brendan Lonnie was not able to join us this evening. But I would ask for a motion from the trust to call the trust to order.
Okay, as Vice Chairman, I move we call the meeting of the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust to order at?
9:05.
9:06 on Monday, the 20th of September.
20th, yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you, we've been moved in second. And any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
So we are now in session, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So the point, the purpose of this meeting and this joint meeting is to discuss the request for proposal for a housing coordinator and to work collaboratively to get the right housing coordinator. Joe, I think I'm going to kick it off with you on the trust side.
Sure, I know with regard to the housing coordinator, had staff do some research, you should have in your packets. I think what would be the original vote of town meeting to establish the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust under Article 40 of the, bear with me for a moment here, I think this was the.
7th, 2018.
Thank you, yep, 2018 Annual Town Meeting. You can see within that, and it's our present bylaw, which was approved by the Attorney General later that year under Section 140-2, Duties and Responsibilities. Item B says, "In addition, the Affordable Housing Trust shall work with the Harwich Housing Committee to develop an affordable housing plan, which shall be updated each year and a copy presented to the Board of Selectmen." So that's the present law of the land. I also want to draw your attention to the explanation on that page, which you can see the second page of that two-page article. And it says, "A key part in establishing the trust and one of the most effective ways our community can jumpstart a housing effort is to fund the hiring of a part-time housing coordinator. Funding for this has been requested through a CPA request." And you'll see that that was unanimously declared as voted. If you look at the next page in your packet, a future article, Article 58. Now, my understanding is this was the first of at least two actions by town meeting where $500,000 was appropriated to the housing trust. But it was also making reference to, it would not only be to fund the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust to create and preserve affordable housing, but also to fund the hiring of a part-time housing coordinator. And then lastly, what you have in your packet is an effort from our Assistant Town Administrator. It's just one example. You heard Mr. McCarland with the housing committee say before that we know the town of Yarmouth has a housing coordinator, the town of Brewster. We've been able to acquire the town of Brewster, just as an example. And so I know that the past Chair of the trust and others can speak to the fact that my predecessor, Town Administrator, initially had sought request for proposals for a firm to provide a housing coordinator. And I think that's the question that brings us here this evening, is what's the best way to proceed? To that question, Mr. Chairman, the board had asked me last week, and I would say that, to me, it's a very straightforward transaction. It's a part-time position, so we would want to update the personnel bylaws to reflect that position within the personnel bylaws, which is where our unaffiliated with unions, so not affiliated with unions positions goes. It's where many of the part-time positions in our town reside, if you will. We can establish a classification and compensation plan. We can develop a job description. We have funding through the CPC articles. And then the next step would just be to advertise for somebody and bring that person on board.
Thank you.
Sure.
Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would take note, because some of this happened before the current town administrator was here. There was significant pushback from the trust itself that we did not like the arrangement with the contract employee. It didn't work. We weren't getting much out of that position in terms of what we anticipated it being. And I know that this town administrator knows that I had lobbied a number of times to see if we could get to a point of hiring somebody in-house so that we actually controlled it. Because it was very confusing. I was seeing a lot of data going out from the company they worked for, taking credit for efforts that were really trust efforts that we paid for. So, but that was a marketing tool. We were looking more for the on-the-ground help.
Mary? One second.
Go ahead.
Oh, me, talking about the, I agree. And I did spend some time today with Donna Kalinek, the Assistant Town Manager, and Jill Scalise, the Housing Coordinator in Brewster. I got to tell you, it's just infectious talking to the two of them. They work as a real team, they're groups, and I'm just very impressed. So I'm very much in favor of bringing on an actual employee that would do work. I asked her who she reported to. She reports partially to Donna, who's the Assistant Town Manager, and partially to the Planning Director. But she said, "I really work for everybody here in Town Hall. If there's a housing issue, people come to me and I take care of them." She just looks like an ideal candidate. And she did say, I said, "Were we to hire someone, would you be willing to spend a little time?" And she was more than gracious in saying she would do that.
Thank you, Mary. Larry?
So the Brewster is, she's part-time?
She is. She's, I believe, 25 hours, funded by CPC. And somewhat, the benefits are funded by the town.
Correct, so the standard is if you work more than, sorry, if you work more than 19 hours, you're part-time, but you now can earn benefits. What we're contemplating, or what I was contemplating, and should be fair about it, is a 19-hour, non-benefited employee to start. Because as Selectmen Anderson was just talking about, they can use CPC funds to pay the salary, but you can't use that to pay fringe benefits, so that part has to come from the town. At present, we do not have a funding mechanism for fringe benefits. That could be changed through annual town meeting.
Thank you, Joe.
Just, well, you know, I'm very disappointed that the contract did not work out. Obviously, it did not work out. We are where we are now, so I'm fully supporting hiring someone.
Mary, go ahead.
I think at least, at least for starters, I mean, we've got nothing, so 19 hours is a great place to start, and we can see if we want to increase that next year.
Larry?
I'm done.
Can I jump bravely in, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you can.
Don is right, we had a lot of discussion with the consultant that we hired to do part-time housing work. Quite frankly, they provided minutes, and they kind of sat around, and they didn't provide us with a great deal of housing expertise. I'm not trying to cast dispersions on them, but they are what they are, and I would not recommend hiring them again. So I would fully recommend that you hire somebody that you mentioned for 19 hours. And I would probably add to that because I've been in positions like that before. So if you're reporting to everybody in Town Hall, nobody's telling you what to do. So you're kind of wandering soul. And I know Joe has got a lot of time on his hands that he can just sit around and, you know, surf the internet and not do a great deal of work, but.
We all agree with that.
Quite frankly, you know, with the few spare moments he's got, he doesn't want to listen to an assistant town planner talking about housing. So it should be John that he answers to. Because overall, he's going to answer ultimately to Joe because Joe is the chief administrative officer. But you don't want to mix policy and administration. That's kind of a deadly combination. So I would simply recommend that he answers to John. Doesn't really make any difference to me who he answers to. But I guarantee you, 19 hours a week will keep them very busy because Don and I can attest that over the last six months, it's taken at least 19 hours a week. I guarantee you that. And there are a lot of things to do when they, there's some people that probably would fill the bill right now. So I'd say, go through and get a good advertisement out. Put it out, see who's interested. You might get somebody that's retired, or somebody that's read out of school. So just go ahead and start that right now because we need them. We've got a long list of things to do.
Thank you, Larry. Judith?
This is what we talked about at our last meeting and the meeting before that. And, yeah, it's, we've talked about this quite a lot. And, yeah, and we have wanted to work with the housing committee. If you go back through our meetings over the last few years, I think the last big meeting that we had prior to COVID hitting, we actually, that was one of the main, we actually did come together to try to figure that out so that, you know, they could do that advocacy piece that really is important.
I mean, I kind of really enjoy the Zoom meetings, but, you know, when you're driving down Transcandala, my wife said, you know, "You better not get caught with the phone in your hand, or the money's going to cost you a fortune." So we pulled over and had a Zoom meeting on Transcandala Highway at the New Brunswick border.
Go ahead, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's not on the agenda, and I don't expect to take any action at all on this. But one of the things that we did vote on as a trust at the last meeting was we wanted to be able to retain special counsel for all purposes so it would be directly involved with the trust. And they want, rather than going through a change in language in real time at a meeting, we were going to kick out the current trust filing in the registry of deeds to the lawyer to see what he would recommend in his language. The one setup in that thing was that the prior town administrator was the policy chief, was the administrative chief. And there were a lot of things that went on that none of us knew about, including the fact that he had looked into hiring an employee regionally with two other towns he made phone calls with that nobody on the trust even had a clue that that was going on.
I'll expect that you'll send me that request, what action you're looking for from the board in an email so I can agenda it.
Yeah, it was voted, so Mr. Powers would have that now.
So we'll discuss it in our regular end of meeting. The two trust members at the table across from us, I don't believe, have all the same information that we have in our packet, but there's a fairly detailed job description, there's a very detailed, everything about the one in Brewster is very detailed. And my only comment is, whether it's 19 hours a week or 25 hours a week, with benefits or without benefits, you get what you pay for. And I think that the initiative and the amount of work and talk that we've done on housing lately and how far we've progressed with the purchase of the Marsaline property and now finally owning land with some other actions being taken by town meeting, that we get what we pay for. So we should make an investment in this, Joe. And I think ultimately, you said it, we don't have the funding right now. But we should be looking forward to the annual town meeting to get the funding that we need to be able to expand that position. Because it is true that towns with strong, and I was on the same webinar Mary was on, towns with a strong trust, working with a strong housing committee, are getting progress done on housing. And we've talked about it far too long. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In anticipation of that a year ago, just so everybody knows, the prior requests had been for 35. Thank you, Mr. Chair. In anticipation of that, a year ago, just so everybody knows, the prior requests had been for thirty-five thousand. The approved request at the last town meeting for a housing coordinator through the CPC from the trust was for fifty thousand dollars. So at nineteen hours, that would, you would definitely have enough money to pull that off.
Thank you. Joe, do you have anything to add?
I don't, none of this time.
Okay. And then in, in the spirit of time, and to Larry's point that you don't have anything to do, when can we expect to come back with a job description slash advertisement? And I know you're busy, we got a, we got a town meeting coming up, so what, what's a realistic date that we can have this conversation again?
I would say your first meeting in October, and that's because it's predominantly there. For me, the biggest part that has to take place is the amending of the personnel bylaws to, to include the position. It has to reside somewhere. I would not recommend that this be part of any of the collective bargaining groups because it mirrors a personnel bylaw employee. So my recommendation in, in your meeting in October would be to amend the personnel bylaws, to add that to one of our classification tables. We can make reference to an up to amount, and, and then separately for the board to endorse the position description, and then direct Megan and I to then advertise and hire.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions from Larry?
That would be fine.
Judith?
No.
Larry?
I'm fine.
Mary?
All set.
Don?
Set.
All right, so would it just get a motion for you?
Yeah, I'd ask a motion for the Affordable Housing Trust to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that the Affordable Housing Trust adjourn at nine twenty PM on September.
Twentieth.
Twentieth.
So far.
So far, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. It all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, guys.
And thank you, members of the trust.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So the next up on the agenda is discussion, or an update on the report on tax collection. That is in the packet with a memo. Amy could not be here tonight. Carol provided through Amy what is in the packet tonight. And touch on highlights, if I can find them. No, there was a memo there, wasn't there, Carol?
I got it. I want this one.
Mr. Chairman, the second, or the first page of the packet is a memorandum from our treasurer collector dated September seventeenth. Is that the item you're mentioning?
Yes.
Yep.
Can you just read that, Joe?
Certainly. So as of September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, there are one hundred thirty-two unpaid fiscal year twenty twenty-one real estate taxes totaling two hundred forty-five thousand eighty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. Twenty-nine were paid since the last update. The unpaid personal property bills have been sent to our deputy collector. Next bullet point indicates that for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, there are thirty-two properties assessed to owners unknown and ninety-four miscellaneous parcels assessed. Third bullet says as of September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, the balance of tax lien accounts is six million eight hundred forty thousand two hundred fifty dollars twenty-eight cents, of which four million seventy-one thousand six hundred two dollars nineteen cents is interest. Twenty-eight thousand one hundred two dollars thirty-six cents was paid since July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, including two parcels paid in full. Fourth bullet point indicates that thirty-seven of the tax lien accounts are owners unknown and account for thirteen percent of the total. And eighty-three are miscellaneous parcels accounting for twelve percent of the total. And then lastly, there are seventeen applications entered into the Division of Local Services Gateway Program waiting for land of low value approval.
Thank you, Joe. And the message really is that the board is doing everything they can to expedite tax collection. And we're still waiting for proposals from our current law firm on going after the owners unknown and cleaning up that mess. Town Administrator's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm very excited about this first one, cause I have nothing to do with it, but I hope to participate in it. Please join us for a fundraiser. One hundred percent of the proceeds benefit the Harwich First Responders and Boston Children's Hospital. On Saturday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, with a rain date of Sunday, September twenty-sixth, twenty dollars per person per round go to Bud's Mini Golf to be part of a fundraiser. The event starts at nine thirty and folks are, are able to pay twenty dollars per round, and the proceeds will benefit Harwich First Responders and Boston Children's Hospital. Secondly, we have a great letter that was shared with the board and that will make sure is updated in the packet. We received a letter from the Cape Cod Senior Softball League, or the CCSSL, and our very own Van Caccadorian, who serves as Commissioner of that, sent a, a letter that we received a copy of today. And in it, he talks to our DPW Director about phenomenal work provided by both Brian Alby and Jared Hopkins of our Department of Public Works, and it relates to their Senior Softball League Annual Cape Cod Classic Tournament, which was scheduled from the tenth to the fifteenth. As you'll remember, we had terrible downpours on the September ninth, but Brian and Jared came to their rescue. Again, it's a great story about two dedicated employees doing great work on behalf of a, a community organization, and also written by a person who does great work for our community. So just great messaging all around. That's all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you, Joe. Selectman's report, Don?
Just to remind everybody, go out and vote tomorrow. It's starting at seven o'clock and ending at eight in the night. Or else we're not gonna have a fifth partner here.
Mary?
I'd, I'd just like to thank you, Michael, for letting me attend a meeting with Cindy Williams. Chairman, no, not Chairman, Secretary Kenealy of Housing and Economic Development was on a listening tour with Julian Seer and Sarah Peake, and I thought Cindy was very wise that she had it be in East Harwich. Everyone thinks Harwich is only Harwich port. So the attendees were all intended to be East Harwich businesses, which was very nice, highlighted those. The most interesting part to me of the meeting, and there were what, maybe a dozen businesses total? They all talked about housing. They talked about not being able to have employees and all related back to housing. Chairman Kenealy talked about that being a problem across the state, which was surprising to me. I thought it was more our seasonality, but I guess it's a much larger problem than us. So kudos to Cindy for pulling that off, and thank you for letting me attend.
Larry?
I have nothing tonight.
And I have nothing. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.